Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the question noting meeting. Meeting is September 1st, believe it or not. Anthony for summer is drawing with quotes. Before we begin, just thought to let you know that my name is Joan Bailey. I have to be the chairperson of planning and zoning. I know there will be some folks that are joining us online. We just always allow with this commission. I will ask that if you are joining us online, please mute yourself. And if you do have something or a comment you want to make during the public hearing, you would have to unmute yourself, identify yourself, and call and tell when you can state the comments. Just be careful not to speak over whoever's speaking. And we want to be courteous to everyone, but also we want to be able to create a sound record of what's taking place. So that is the reason for that. So we're gonna just move on into our agenda. I'm gonna ask Maureen to take the role call for the commission. Go ahead, Maureen.
I was going to actually ask you. I looked at the other intended.
Okay.
So it sounds like I'm hearing it.
All right. Oh, soundless there. Oh, sorry about that, guys. So Maureen, the role call. John Michael Ryan, absent. Sandy Capola, here. Diane Joycey, here. Timothy Ziegler, Brian Rogan, here. Scott Hamel, absent. Chairman Dealey, here. Andrew Lang Danny, alternate, absent. And Steve Biella Jr., alternate.
I'm here.
He's joining us online. And Steve, I'm gonna ask you to be seated for the reading, okay?
No problem, Joe.
All right, so stand by and be in the ready. All right, thank you. All right, so thank you for that. We do have a forum, and I'm gonna ask everyone to rise and pledge allegiance, please. Thank you. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One issue, individuals with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, we have up here the review and approval of the minutes. We have first off, August 4th, 2022. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? Are there any corrections? Or do we have a motion? All right, motion by Mr. Ziegler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve.
All right, we have two extensions. We have Steve Biella, we have Diane Joycey. And so we have one, two, three, four. We still have, they're still supposed to evolve. All right, good. Well, those are accepted. Onto August 18th of 2022. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any corrections? Or do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve those minutes? All right, thank you, Ms. George. Do we have a second? Second, second by Ms. Capola. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Stand, extension by Ms. Ziegler. All righty. So move, two passes. All right, onto scheduling public hearings. The first item is a special permit site plan for Quantum of Berlin to LLC for proposed indoor sports complex. For Rob Roebuck, this is a suggested date of October 20th. Do we have a motion? A move to schedule a public hearing for October 20th? All right, thank you, Ms. George. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Segment, but thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye. As opposed, so move. Item B, re-subdivision of town Kokomo, Kokomo Brothers for two lots at 44 Randaker Lane. This is also suggested date of October 20th, 2022. Do we have a motion? And would you mention to schedule for October 20th? All right, thank you, Ms. George. Do we have a second? Second, second by Sandy Capola. And further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. As opposed, so move. Item C, petition for proposed text amendment to delete Section 11D, D, planned residential infill available. And we're gonna have to open this by October 7th. So we have to make a motion to schedule for October 6th. Motion by Ms. George. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
As opposed, so move. Onto the new business. The first item under new business is being postponed, and this is postponed to October 6th. It was a site plan application of Rocky River Realty alterations to a gas training portion of the existing training yard under construction. So do we need to make a motion to move that to October 6th?
I think it would be best just because it was scheduled, it was scheduled October 6th.
Okay, terrific. Do we have a motion? I'm moving to postpone the item to the October 16th. Okay, thank you, Ms. George. Do we have a second on that item? Second, second by Sandy Capola. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. As opposed, so move. Moving on. Site plan amendment application of John Kugas, Stan Ham Polymers Incorporated to construct a new accessory 64 foot, 4 inch by 161 feet, 4 inch by 28 foot high detached accessory structure for dry product and eight bay tanker truck storages, storage with related site improvements at 401 Berlin Street in East Brom. Do we, yes, we have somebody here for the, no, great. Yeah, I guess try to, let's try to use that one if we can. Oh, for a second, here, hold on.
Turn it on, they can see it, you can.
And Maureen, we have something to share with the people on the job.
Yeah.
All right, no, 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 no.
No, you're good.
I'm ready to write for them. Yeah, this is Stan Ham. I'm gonna get a call from the time I vote.
If you could just tell me which you're on.
1.0. I'll also go to use 3 and 2 and 2.1.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Van Day. I'm a professional engineer with Freight Environmental. You're on behalf of Stan Ham Polymers. Actually, I have the application for this accessory structure. The property that, property where Stan Ham is located is 401 East Berlin Street. Not above the river, along the eastern property. So on this plan, looking at north is the right the Madabasset to the east, which is also the town line problem. The ten properties, approximately 18 acres. Stan Ham operates on the southern 12 and a half acres that are shown on this plan. They're located in a planned industrial area. Used here, Stan Ham uses the property. They manufacture specialty paint items, high temperature paint, lacquer, things like that, that are shipped offsite to end users. The paint companies that I all know. What they're proposing to do here is building an accessory structure. So on the plan of a top right corner, that'd be the north section of the operation area. That's where the accessory building will be located. And then the other orange rectangle, others to the south, they're gonna be relocated in their club scale, that area. So we focus first on that top right area. I just started by saying that all the improvements here are used in this, the accessory use here. Building of the scale is located outside of any setbacks. Probably to the west are other industrial properties. Actually, all the properties, the exception of two southwest are all other industrial property. This is in an area that is currently being used. They use this area now to store tanker trucks that are being staged either before being filled with finished product or after they've been filled with finished products before being shipped offsite. So they'll park the tanker trucks, the tankers, in this area. And then trucks will come to the property, drive in, attach to the trailers, and then scale, and then will keep the property. So the intent for this building is, is to provide Stan Cameron area to put up to eat trailers inside of this building. So you have a temporary storage area for the trailers. And then a portion of the building is also used for dry storage. Because they're used to manufacture of different products on the facility. As was mentioned, it's approximately 61 by 161 feet, 28 feet high. It's an area, as I said, is previously developed. And going to improvement to the operations that they're doing now by moving the trailers inside of a building out of the elements. Really, offsite, for the driving lot. So the building will be serviced by electricity to run lighting. And it'll be serviced by steam to run heat. It's 24, sorry, 365 day operation. So this gives employees somewhere to stay out of the elements. It will be heated, so it's a comfortable area for employees to work. It won't be serviced by water, there's, you know, office spaces like that in here. So it'll just be heat and light at this structure, which will be pulled from existing services already, so. The building will be made out of CME blocks, basically unit blocks, supported by concrete slab and vegetable concrete spread footing. The, it'll be painted, the block will be painted white. It'll have architectural shingles and several wall packs on the outside of the building in order to just push security lighting in the evenings. So in order to provide access to the trucks, there's a, this is scale that's located right in front of this building. That's gonna be relocated to a different part of the site, which I'll discuss in just a moment. But before we move on, there is wetlands on the property. Before the wetlands commission, they improved this. Plantings that are around the north and the west side of the building are wetlands, native species plantings. And the other green hatched area, it's the native grass mixture. So areas that are, will be served, the projects will be seated with a lot of trucks. With only stormwater off of the buildings with, shown in the drawing, as a stone trench. The only stormwater that we're generating here, new stormwater generated here would be off of the building. So we'd be collecting that through roof leaders and directing it to this stone trench that will size for the water calling volume. Any storms larger than that, it will flow out of the top of it and run along the west side of the building to the wetlands and then flow to the Madabasset where it directly goes today. So we're not changing any patterns for the stormwater. You could, we need to switch to another sheet.
First one?
Sheet 2.1. Scale over here.
Make sure that somebody's running this one on your computer as well.
Okay.
Just for the folks here.
I'll be back with it.
Thank you.
So the other area that's being improved at the facility is, is this is near the southwest portion of the property, near the entrance and exit. This is where the scale will be relocated to existing scale, approximately about the same size. It has a scale house and one light pole, again, for, for the habits in the evening. So they'll be replacing that in time with a light pole and shed that'll work as a scale house or something. It'll be made, okay, tickets. That is trucks moving out, already plates. This is an area that's already paved, so we're not changing any stormwater impacts up here. And with other things, we'll be doing, relocating some existing concrete blocks here and here. They're already, they're already there. There's some shifting movement to allow the trucks to, to work out of this area. So that's really the extent, extent of the project, building, scale relocation. Again, no, no new employees, are not expecting new traffic patterns off the property. We actually feel like this is going to be a little bit more efficient for the properties, taking trucks into out of the facility. So again, we're not expecting any offsite impacts or onsite impacts. Oceanic full measures will be handled with residential ocean control EMPs with silk decks and, and a protection near one cash base and new scale. But other than that, it's a fairly flat site. And we don't expect any adverse impacts.
All right, commission.
Yes.
Yeah. Go on, continue.
I have a couple of questions. First, I know my man's viewed this project. But there is, I want him to do the project.
Yes.
Yes.
And there's an extent of my man. I would like to ensure that. No, maybe. That's a question I just need to. The thing I noticed. On, 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 on station, south of the property. Well, that access to the river. Fire department could pop out of the river. I just want to make sure that it's done correctly, it's still there and accessible to the firefighter. I noticed that there's a chain with pens there, right in the office station. So I just want to make sure that nothing's been blocked for that access for the market. One other concern I do have is truck traffic on East Brom. Truck traffic does now use the road. But I wonder if you would contain, since I'm not that driveway that truck driver, our truck traffic only use Berlin Street, the exit, the highway, or to Mill Street. Not use Main Street. Because Main Street is a small street and awful lot of walkers on that road. Berlin Street has been improved, now widened. And I like to see the trucks only use Berlin Street. They go to Mill Street, they can go left or right. The highway they're going to, so you know. Or Route 9 right there, you go to 9184. It's good access for the trucks right there. The truck truck coming to.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else have some questions?
Sure. So this area where the accessory structure is going, that's currently being used for parking of these tanker trucks.
That's right, yeah, they lock them up side by side.
Okay. That area is. And I saw that you were gonna put some screening, anything behind accessory structure?
That's right.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure they see that. I don't know if Maureen, did you pull it up? This area, nothing, so we can see if there's a residential unit there for Mr. Pettit.
Oh, it's a commercial.
That's commercial? Okay.
Yeah, over there. It's gonna be the fine up to what I did that.
I just wanted to make sure that if that was a residential, even if it's industrials on, was residential unit there, that screen was sufficient. We weren't, so now. Okay.
So I'll give a little explanation. So the gray area is Stan Ham. It's project design, he's just at the edge of this already played area. So if he referred to the, I got the acreage wrong, but this being the approximate 12 acres developed in the site and this being the remaining of the 17 acre. So that's where the rest of the acreage is. It's on the map, you guys, that we brought up on the screen, that upper, more back of the property. This is Commerce Street. This property here, you may recall, is the Commerce Street, or this kind of returning property that we, that is potentially not long ago, I think this one's, which is now proper head precision. They've cleared a good portion of the front of their property that they use this, to the back. This is Paradigm Precision, I believe. So I'll see. I believe it's the factory that's Paradigm Precision. There are residences on Berlin Street and the very start of Commerce Street and across the street of some of these residences. These are a mixed use from the very beginning. So somehow, there's no part to be worried about.
Nice, yes.
Especially industrial.
If the person who just joined the zoo could communicate themselves.
The trucks come in off Berlin Street here and then go into the property. I don't want them to speak as to what their traffic flow is. I took me at a pre-meeting, but.
That happened to go through.
I would, I would need to know what the traffic flow is.
Sure.
So if you can.
We're coming to. Describe it to Maureen.
Yeah, she'll try to follow with the thing, with the mouse or whatever, so we can all see.
Sure. All right, so starting from Berlin Street. I've been going north, I've stayed to the left of those buildings. Yep, going north, following that's the road there. Going, so direction from there. So right with the mouths now are slightly to the right of the mouth, there's a loading dock. So there, area that, there trucks kind of come in and they turn and they go back into that long linear building. When we're talking about those, they would continue to the left between the two buildings, you know, and then up into that area where the accessory building would be. And then now that space out in front, now would be used to, they make the movements back, back trailers into the buildings. And then they would pull straight out there and go out the same way. So there you can see the trailers how they're lined up outside. See sort of a small white building. Other side of that one, that's no longer there. That's about what the accessory structure. It would be larger than that, but it's a possible location where it's set. And then take a right hand turn out of the structure and then go out the same way you came in.
Okay. The proposed structure is going to be 28 feet. So how does that compare to what is already on the property? What is the height of the existing storage area?
So there is no, there is no structure there for, for storage. The only thing that are there are the larger manufacturing buildings. So what you're looking at in that area are just trailer, truck trailers lined up.
Okay, so the building that is there now on the property? That one, the big one, yeah. Is, is that your building?
That is, that's on the San Ham. Yeah, they're manufacturing operations.
Okay, and how tall is that building?
I don't know off the top of my head how tall that building is, but anyway.
Two stories? Three?
We either, it's, or, yeah, it's, the structure would be smaller, shorter than that though.
Oh, it'd be shorter, but it would be taller?
Not as, no. I say short, I, it's not as tall, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. The, the trucks that will be in the new building, will they be filled with anything? Any kind of company or anything?
They also, yes, they'll, they'll be filled with finished products. So they, they would be filled at, at the manufacturer, would be, and that's the building and it moves to, to move into the structure.
Okay. But are they filled like, I hate to be dumb about this. So are they filled like can, like five gallon drywall buckets or?
No, this would be like, this would be like a, like you'd see like a gasoline tanker on the road. So, so that would be gallon tanker truck.
Okay.
Somebody to water deliver in, something along that, that scale.
All right.
So it would just be the trailer that'd be floating inside that building. And then a truck would come to the facility, just like a, a rig. They would come, go to the structure, go to where the tankers are.
Yeah.
And hook up and they would pull out.
All right, so once they're filled, chances are they're back on the road. They're not gonna stay overnight filled, are they?
No, I don't see, you know, staying, it's a temporary, temporary storage. So I don't, I don't think it's storing long term.
Okay.
And, and just, I didn't mention it during my presentation, but the building will actually be designed in a way to, if there was ever a spill of one of these tankers, you know, that would prevent it, it never happens. But if it does, the floor gets sloped, it's too away from the doors.
Okay.
So that the full contents of one of these trailers can be contained inside the building without flowing out of the building.
Okay.
So that's another improvement, you know, over current problems that I've worked out.
Exactly. Okay, I know that you had mentioned architectural shingles being used. Have you given any thought? And, and I, I like ar- architectural shingles, but have you given any thought to perhaps some value?
It's, that hasn't been considered?
Yeah. The, the reason I'm saying, the reason I would put that out to you is that because it would be an industrial building or a storage building with, I think a metal roof will last you longer. So it might be worth the investment. Also, God forbid if something should happen in there of a combustible nature. It might be, I, you might want to just consider.
I, I could certainly verify.
I want to knock on the door. But I mean, it would probably target kind of fire or, or whatever.
I don't think they'll be storing any combustible liquid inside. But, you know, it's, it's something that should be considered.
Yeah, because you're, you're thinking about eight, eight trucks.
Oh, you took about it to be on for trucking.
I'm looking.
And eight trucks.
Right.
So it might be a thought to look at. Again, I realize that cost may be an issue, but in the long run, it's a good idea.
Of course, of course.
All right, but that's all right. Anyway, I'll let somebody else jump in if you have any comments or questions.
Can I have the?
Yes.
Can you send me an article?
Yeah, if Maureen pulls up, it's, say, hand, rubbery.
All right, you answered the question about storage. Okay. So basically, their, their operations, as far as what they're doing day to day, how they work right now, is not going to change other than the fact that now these trailers that are exposed will now be covered in.
That's right.
In the bay and have some.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. Good. I said, go ahead, Maureen, anyone else?
Have the fire button, will we do it?
Yes. No comment. They provided no comment.
There are fires, present in, in, in buildings. There's, there's not, the building won't be serviced by water. There is a fires and present system, they'll have to water, but. So there is a fires and pressures that will have to water, but uh. Pressure mark and our uh, back and trucks and that all uh, plant will include. And if they're empty, they're probably more dangerous than if they're full. I think there should be a fire. So I would like that uh reviewed by fire marshal. Yeah, really storage vehicles inside a building, uh. There should be some kind of fires, but uh, super, or having, the buildings would have to be fast, it's one of the appropriate building codes. That's all for fires protection. That's certainly something that would be included. I can't say that it isn't, I'm not aware of the building code, architect, I can't speak to that. Uh, if it was required, then certainly it would need to be included. I do see a permanent, you know. By the way. Run along the west side of Amherst, difficult with property. Okay. That was the uh, rail track once upon a time.
Correct.
Uh, and it proceeded up. North of this property, or west side of the property. And that is our potential. Uh, rail trails, uh, area. So I, I'm wondering, uh. I know it's on this property here, I don't know if it does go on to the old, um, new property further up. Uh, yeah, children here has nothing, uh. We just pulled out, it runs along a western boundary that come on to, come out of the property. That define the, the western boundary of.
Yeah, no, that, that east, east, that's right there, but it stops right there. And I just wonder further going down your property line.
Uh, along the south, yes, uh, further south, yes, it does, to south of the property, yes.
So, so it keeps on going. I don't know, I think it's the time, if, if it is to. Make that offer personally to uh. A town or someone that uh, that's potential rail trail, uh, other than the public.
Should mention, uh, that, that area is, it's type wetlands, uh, very good wetlands on that property, not to say that it isn't, uh. You know, potentially, yes, could be with a rail trail or something along the line, but it would, it would have to come back. Before the town, from the mission, but certainly wetlands commission before they develop, it's still on that area. On time, crannies go down there. And there's actually trains.
I, I see what you're talking about, but I don't see public access to the rail.
Goes all the way up, you were, uh, I don't know, road, hold up through.
I think Mr. Edge wants to say something.
Hello there, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road. Um, Commissioner, I will actually engage the leadership on the consulting firm, so as, as, as good as an idea as it is. Not the best guy to talk to, and I, I'm happy to engage leadership on at uh, Stan Camp, I just want to add a couple of quick things. This property, as many of us know, has been here for many, many years. Um, it was, actually, new leadership took over about forty years ago. They've increased dramatically on the number of people there, the number of engineers, uh, certainly in addition to what they've been doing. Helps them to grow, uh, with a property like this is challenging, the average building is probably a hundred years old. Um, and I think it's nice because it helps to modernize what they're doing. And I'm appreciative of it because I know that this is one of those properties that it has not helped the right hands. It's major, it sits there. So I think it's good that they're coming with us and I definitely would like to assist. Especially if the rails and trails does happen. We'd have a discussion with them, I've kind of got their leadership very well, and they've actually been a really, really good. Uh, addition to the town, because I know they're right in that area with the residential, but they've done a great job fitting. We're actually, we're excited to have, so just sort of kind of give you the, that feedback.
Yeah, I, I also think there's something to be said about them wanting to go ahead and do the investment of the building to actually move the trailers inside. Um, because if anything, it'll just look nicer for the surrounding area and then we'll have all these box cars all over the place. So, um, that I think is an encouragement. Um, I just was, um, I, I just want to make sure that we do it the right way. Um, and that it's, we do the best job that we can. Uh, there's one last question I do have, thank you Chris for the comment. Uh, there's one last question I do have, is that currently the way that's shown the road going into the industry. Uh, it appears to be paved and then it turns into a dirt road. Now, should the approvals go through and you build your building, are you going to be extending the paved area so that it would not be um. A, a dirt road that the trucks drive on, you know, in the summer and dust and everything, it's fine.
Let's see here.
I mean, I don't even know crush stone would hold it down, I mean, after a while that goes to dirt too.
Yeah, yeah, um, sorry, I just had to, for my own recollection, I had to actually look at the drawing. It's hard to tell in the photo, but it, it does say that it is paved, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah.
Uh, if it's just this colored from, um, trucks going in and out, uh, but it does, it is paved currently.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe it's more of a.
Then, that was one of the errors, because it looked like it was a, a dust, it, it looked like it was paved and then wasn't a dust.
It does, I, I agree with you. I think that entrance, the, the entrance off of Berlin Street was recently reconstructed. I'm probably why you see a different, different color.
Oh, alright.
Island put in, which means separates inbound and outbound traffic.
Well, that's nice. There's landscaping in that little island.
I can probably, you know, do that, they use the consultant from that, um, to the Madabasin. Madabasin district.
Okay.
So it comes through there, so they actually had installed some improvements that they then had to remove.
Ah, okay.
The Madabasin district was very precise as to what would be allowed.
Okay, that is my question, anyone else? Yeah, so go ahead.
As I said, I would like to start to draw a phone. And there should be a sign there that says no left turn to Paco Hill Road. That's the little road, rarely here that turns and stuff, and I saw one of the trucks getting stuck over there, that was the car. So, uh, so they want the phone card, you know, something along the same way. Uh, so it could, and if I included, you know. Left turn on, with that little road.
Okay.
It certainly have, have a, you can look at the travel, have you can look at the travel patterns off the property again, there was. Change, changes off the property. Uh, so there are. Other considerations for that, but maybe I have to take a look.
Okay, thank you. Maureen, do you have any?
I, well, I have one comment on some, on a statement that was made, and I guess it's a little unclear, and I just the consultant, I mean, no one from the factory is here. But during our pre-application meetings, um, my recollection is that they did say that they were going to. One of the reasons they wanted to close garage was so that they could put building trucks into it, so they can just be picked up during the proper hours of the morning. Instead of, and in a controlled environment, because they can't, it's problematic to leave them outside because the contents are um. Temperature sensitive, so they had indicated to me that they would be leaving trucks in there.
Excuse me.
So I'm gonna correct that.
I didn't, I, 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 sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Maureen, but I just.
Oh, okay.
It says, I'm here for, for the flex site, but I didn't, I was sorry.
Okay, so just name, your name and address.
Dennis Faison, uh, DHS Director at Dacnagum.
Okay.
My address is three fifty five Howard Ridge, South. And so, I didn't want to interrupt Steve.
Maureen's doing a nice job, wasn't she?
But the, uh, we're building, the, the main purpose of the building is the, the eight bays is the, in the winter time, you know, stand. The measurement moisture, when you drop an empty, take a pull. And in the summer, it works great, load them ahead of time. And in the winter, that, it doesn't work so well, so they just have the back end of the building connect and get loaded, it takes two, three hours. So, the building there, in the summertime, we load them ahead of time. In the winter, you can't do that, because it's freezing, but it's all latex paint.
Yeah.
They don't say, um, no, no hollows, no, um. And so the building would be heated so that they can, you know, we'd park them in there, we fill them in that long building, and then we have a little goat yard goat. We bring it over there, park them in there, and then, that's, that's the main purpose, that is the purpose of the building.
Yeah, well, well, basically, yeah, we, we agree with that, and we think that that's a really good idea.
And we, we did want to say with, I think, Steve, he wanted to go.
He wanted to, by marshal?
And uh, we would be backing in, you know, a cab would back the, the trailer in, but then there's no flame ball. There'll be a little flame ball on it, will be parked.
So it would just be the cab that's parked, now, not, not the, the trailer parked, not this, okay.
Correct.
You don't have one of them, you don't have a trailer.
Pardon?
You don't have one of them.
No, not, not the ones that be parked, the ones that come in, uh, they go around back to those tall tanks, those are monitors, they get unloaded and then they just. They don't stay on site, uh, park there or.
Oh, okay. Oh, that changed.
That's, that's a water, you know, they, what goes in the, they bake garage, we all water base.
Okay.
And they're outside now, and, you know, like you said, if you had a spill, it's been, like, back as a two inch pitch. It's a hole about six thousand gallons, and each trailer had about thirty two hundred.
Okay.
No, no, well, in Connecticut, you're going to carry, uh, you carry less than other states, there's a way, the other states may carry a bit more.
Anyone else?
I will make a motion to approve the site plan amendment with staff comments, and I ask that they. One more condition, that they work with staff on, uh, submitting a traffic pattern to reduce the impact of their trucking to the residential areas.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Roken, Commissioner Roken, do we have a second? Good second, second by Sandy Polo, uh, for the discussion commissioners.
I just want to praise the new company, uh, they have done a good job keeping the elders down in the neighborhood.
It's, yeah, it's been a challenge.
And then, Dan Kim was the, uh, the, your company now, and I pray that.
I've been an engineer there for about three and a half years.
On a good job. Alright, so we have the motion, we have a second, uh, any other questions, discussion, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Right, there we go. I'm the public here, and I think I need to ask, um. Uh, secretary, you can be the phone to the public here.
Maureen. Here's two separate pages, rep A, it's A and B, you want me to cover one? Respectfully, when we remind all the people.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This was the first ad.
Okay, so I'll say that I did all A.
The hearing, because that, that was the one that, at the last meeting, the paper had only run once, so.
Okay.
They had it written separately.
I just wanted to read it correctly. Alright. Let's see, call this first. Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at its regular meeting on Thursday, September first, twenty twenty two. Seven PM in the Town Council chambers, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. A, proposed amendment to zoning regulations, Joseph F. Casio, section six H three, special permit uses. Regarding indoor sports complex uses in the BT two zone. B, special permit slash site plan application of Kevin Coolside Camerat LLC for enterprise truck rental location at map ten dash three block eighty three. Uh, twenty eight dash one A and one B, one nineteen and two oh seven Webster Square Road, unit address one fifty three. Additionally, uh. A, special permit slash site plan application of Little House Living LLC for nineteen residential units, three single family. Style building, the eight two touch style building, and related site improvements at sixteen seventy six Berlin, care by. M E L twenty two dash one dash one forty four dash ten, and the BT one zero. So, the application and related reading materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Dated this eighteenth day of August, twenty twenty two, Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Planning and Zoning Commission, New Burton, Harold, classified advertising legal notice, dates of publication. Saturday, August twenty, twenty twenty two, and Monday, August twenty ninth, twenty twenty two.
Thanks, Maureen. Can I clarify for the record that that second item, A, is C on the agenda?
Second item, A.
The last item read, does I can see on the agenda. So we ran a separate little ad ahead of the.
And the first two were, and the first A and B were dated the seventeenth day of August, twenty twenty two. And I don't see was dated, B came the August, just for a clear.
Okay, I've got your list through that. Okay, according to the public hearings, I am A, the proposed amendment for the zoning regulations for, um, Joseph F. Casio. For section six H three, uh, special permit uses regarding the indoor sports complex. Complex uses in the BT two zone. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing today?
I'm doing well, thank you for having me. A pleasure to be here.
Uh, just a little quick introduction of myself, and my name is Joe Casio. Uh, I'm a lifelong Connecticut resident. I reside in Weatherfield, Connecticut, at one thirty one Southwell Road. Um, I just retired from a thirty two year mortgage banking career. Uh, and it was not by choice, it was by medical disability, so forgive me in the meetings here, because I've lost. Part of my central vision, so my proposal, it's a little dark, layer would be better. Oh, thank you, Maureen. Um, but I decided to be here tonight, I, I thought I'd start this off by saying, uh. Honestly, if I was here talking about mortgages, there wouldn't be a nerve that, that, or a butterfly in my stomach that would churn. And I'd probably be able to speak and bore you asleep, right? Uh, but tonight, it's a little different for me. Uh, and I'm here to discuss the BT two zone and how it applies to me and my proposal, that I hope I get your blessing out. Uh, so I'll do my best in trying to explain exactly what I've encountered in a ride around Berlin with Mr. Edge. And currently, uh, the way the zoning reads, uh, in the BT two. It allows for health and fitness, that's the closest, um, uh, approved item that would fit what I'm trying to do. Um, but, you know, discussions with Chris, we, we, we went ahead and we took a little step backwards before we go forwards. Uh, and there's other, like, about fourteen or sixteen other approved uses for the BT two zone. However, I didn't feel that it would fit in what I'm trying to do. So the changes that we're asking for in the BT two zone. The language changes is to include indoor sports complexes, gymnasiums, tennis or racket clubs. So we ask why the changes in the BT two zone slash Demming Road and surrounding areas. In my observations and running around the town several different times. Uh, just seeing what's around, what the volume of traffic would be for the facility I'm opposing. Uh, currently in the BT two zone, I noticed there are a lot of existing industrial buildings. Uh, in need of revitalization, uh, just unattended, unoccupied at this point in time. By adding the verbiage, the, uh, to this, in this proposal, that I believe it'll open business opportunities which may have. Out there and under the current approved zoneage. And uses. By approving this change, the, these things, changes, uh, it may, in my belief, change, uh, I can't even, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
It is my belief that the change will also increase the development potential with additional experiences and uses for properties within the BT two zone. Experiences which others may have had to seek elsewhere outside of Berlin. The property on Demming Road, which I am looking to lease, has been vacant for approximately ten years. Uh, it's, it is in the base lift, and I'm hoping to provide just that. Some of the ideas I have to begin is painting the exterior concrete block of the building, screws it up. Resurface the existing parking lot, which is in need of attention. Landscaped the front of the building to include flower beds, mulch beds, and resell the grass areas. Over time, I would also like with the approval of the town and building code, build through and address the windows and doors. Currently, the adjoining neighbors operate a machine shop, as well as an indoor baseball and soccer facility. I asked myself, geez, what a concept. And really, no difference if you're hitting a baseball or you're hitting a golf ball. Thus, this provides a much needed revitalization of an old dorm building in need of some attention. By facelift, and that's what I call it, facelift of the building, I'm talking both external and internal. Uh, I believe also this would have low impact to the town of Berlin's services. Um, really, it's not affecting anything except to have revitalization of an existing structure, which housed in the past a machine shop. The facility will have a state-of-the-art, uh, state-of-the-art technology for training and coaching, uh, allowing golfers of all levels to either learn or hone in on their skills. Berlin being centrally located in the state of Connecticut, along with easy access from the Berlin Turnpike Route nine and surrounding highways through Demming Road, allows for many local businesses, surrounding towns, and new developments in town to utilize this facility. Economic development on and around Demming Road, I have to tell you, it's absolutely tremendous. Chris and I did a ride around, and I just couldn't believe the amount of new buildings going up. So, with that, um, I think it would all, it would enhance an already desirable area. If you like, uh, I would like, I like this to become a, of course, destination location for Berlin and all who reside, work, and visit the town. Patrons of the facility would also be allowed to have food delivered to the facility. And I hope, my hope is that they would support the local area businesses. This location also provides low impact, I repeat that, low impact, to any residential neighborhoods. If you look to the left of us, it's an industrial building. If you look to the right of us, there's an industrial building. You look down the road, there's more industrial buildings, Home Depot and other retail shops there. I will also be proud to say, with your approval, I'll be providing other employment opportunities, hopefully for high school students learning the game of golf and to, and their, their talent destination. Finally, if we're thinking about money, uh, this would also enhance tax revenue to the town of Berlin. Uh, currently, I don't know exactly what the taxes are, but I'm assuming with a new facility, a business, that this is something that would fit well to the entire plan of the town of Berlin. The actual proposal of the facility, with all that I've already said, you probably guessed, it revolves around golf. And yes, it does revolve around golf. I personally would love to open a state-of-the-art facility, uh, to have an indoor golf complex, which is not seasonal. The complex will include eight hitting bays, which double as practice, training, coaching, or rounds of golf being played. And over a hundred and sixty-five courses to choose from, with the systems that will be purchased to be utilized by all patrons. There will be also, uh, the building will house also within this structure, a putting green, which is approximately four hundred and forty square feet, so twenty by twenty-two. Um, and it'll have approximately five holes where people can actually practice putting. There will also be an area where soft drink, a soft drink bar and snacks will be served. At this point, there is no alcohol. Get that right off the table. Solve all those problems right now. Um, unless you guys want to give me the, go ahead. As people enter the building, there will be a specific check-in area. And it's, if you're going to a golf course, it's really considered a quote pro shop. So, for all kinds of purposes, I've called it a pro shop. It's a, it's a place where the pro or the teaching coach or a high-level golfer, uh, who has credentials would be able to meet their, their proposed, uh, candidate train. And, uh, and also for me to make sure that the booths are ready, uh, for the new patients coming in, coming into the facility so that booth is ready with the course they want to play and the screen be ready to go. What's really cool is that the, these types of facilities are not age restricted. So, I, I would love to see, and golf is growing at leaps and bounds, and I would love to see younger kids coming into this facility and learning the game of golf. And they could do that year-round. You might say year-round, you're, you're in Connecticut, what do you mean, you can play golf right now? Listen, on those hundred degree days, I'm a single handicap golfer myself. I wouldn't want to be able to play golf. So, you come inside, air-conditioned building, you have the ability to not worry about sweating, clothes slipping, uh, and you do have the best of the best. I think this is really important to bring your attention. There is two local golf courses, to my knowledge, here in town. Uh, the Timberland Golf Course and Sheldon Oak Golf Course. I play both, amazing tracks. And I would, granted this opportunity, I would love to partner with each of the pros. And I have several friends that are pros, pros at these facilities. Not only enhance what they offer to their guests and their members and their, their, their players every weekend, ability to grow the game of golf through partnering up with both of these courses. Please assist me in making my dream come true, a reality, and have a destination location right here in the wonderful town of Berlin, Connecticut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, just so that we're clear on this, I mean, I, you, you described a lot of what you're thinking about doing, and that pretty much falls in line with a site plan. But the consideration we have at the course tonight is a amendment to the text. So, we're going to have to strip away a lot of that stuff off the wish list and just look to see if, what's being proposed for the amendment, um, is, is worthy consideration, discussion, and acceptance or approval. So, I'm going to ask the town planner, because we're talking about the BT two zones. We have to look at it as if this is an opportunity for anyone within this zone to put up a sports complex, not just one specific site. So, what I need to do is I want to look to see where the BT two zone is in Berlin and how far it comes to system um, before we can actually start deliberation, um, and continue with the public hearing regarding this proposal, this text amendment. So, um, I know that we talked about it being, if it doesn't be T two zone, Maureen, and I know you're looking for the map. It starts with the Demming Road area, or is it from north of that?
So, we have two BT two zones.
All right.
One is along Demming Road.
Along Demming Road, going, or Christian Lane?
Going.
The other one?
Going east from the Berlin Turnpike.
Oh.
The property at the corner of Demming Road and the Berlin Turnpike, on one side of the street, you have the, the small gas station that was rebuilt a couple of years ago. And the vacant lot that, and, uh, industrial building where the rug guy. And, yeah, that site. So, that, or that corner itself, the south side of that corner, has been rezoned a couple of months ago to, to BT one, which is the zone along the Berlin Turnpike.
Okay.
Um, as you go.
I'm sorry, that corner is.
East, um, the corner itself is BT one.
Okay.
So, you simply don't, as you go along to the east, towards Robbie Hills, um, the zone on the right-hand side of the street is BT two.
And that would be across the street from the, um, the complex?
Yes.
That's where.
Across the street from Home Depot.
Yeah.
I'm actually.
There was like a plaza in there with second-class cleaning or first-class cleaning, I think at one point was in there. There was some other, like Verizon as well. I think Chris said once.
There's a, there's a, a lodgeback in there.
Yes.
And then, as you go along the road, there's several, there was a glass guy.
Yes.
That still are kind of, uh, you know, whatnot shops, I guess we'll call it. Yeah. Um, there's another property that is getting very, uh, it's actually been upgraded. Couple of those properties, they're working on cleaning, how, and cleaning up within the flood zone, there are more plans up there. And those are industrial buildings that are along that series. They were built, industrial buildings, same factory building. But as the applicant said, one of them has been engulfed, uh, rather indoor.
Okay.
That engages since two thousand and five.
Okay.
So, essentially, it's, it's the retail building that has dominoes all the way down to the last industrial building cross from Home Depot.
Okay, but it doesn't go as far as where River's edge is.
No, it doesn't. It starts down that property, it's the industrial property that has manufactured the golf and the soccer, it's the last commercial piece. It's an open space and all residential.
Okay.
So, and this, this is the map on Demming Road.
All right.
I'm sorry, I just pulled it up.
Oh, yeah.
However, this parcel right here was the one we zoned. This map is in the older map.
So, that's BT one now, where that big piece is.
This piece here is BT one, but these, one, two, three, four, five pieces are BT two. Across the street is P S, I'm going to get the wrong one.
That's all right.
Is, Home Depot is P S B, and then the, to the south is industrial, that's Waydough Drive. And to the east are residential stuff.
So, where's the other BT two?
Ever source, right. And then the other BT two is down on the closer to the south end of the Berlin Turnpike. Um, we discussed. Discussed that a couple of weeks ago as well, although not on the public, but at that meeting. That one, take the man and, and for those online, I think I forgot to hit the share button. I'm sorry, I'll bring it up in one second. I wanted to share it.
So, that's the other BT two.
This is the other BT two zone. Very sensitive.
Yeah, I want to say it starts right about where La Bardo Auto, Auto is. La Bardo Auto and La Bardo Auto, that's Safari Golf South, is BT two for about a block or so. Both sides of the road, um, the majority of it is already developed. Uh, there is the Hawthorne, there is the Days Inn, and then a couple of other commercial properties. So, the majority of it's already developed. There's not a lot that is the.
Yeah, and layer on.
Well, so there's not much left in the BT two.
No, the, the, this, this is, the, the, really is, a lot of it's already developed. The ones that are not developed for recent, and that probably will be developed, so. It is that, so I just want to help clarify the GR.
Yeah, well, that's, because we do need to know what's being impacted, right? All right, terrific. Um.
There are, in my, in my staff report, you see that, I noted that it's a very much a mix of uses in both the BT two zones as far as the style of buildings, um, which is one of the, um, comments on this kind of, these uses where they, they typically and frequently go into what were industrial buildings that aren't, that are industrial anymore, but they have high ceilings, big open spaces, um, that athletic uses.
Yeah. All right. Um, commissioners, before I go to the, well, actually, let me go to the public first. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Now would be the time to share your thoughts, your vocal answers. Well, hold on, hold on, staff. Is there anyone here who's a public? Okay, no one, no, I can do, Chris, go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
My biggest fan of my life, Chris. This is an exciting one for me, because if you look at what's happening in Berlin the last couple of years, we're really pushing solid Berlin, experience the community. I think it's a great opportunity. We have two very successful golf courses. We have, I don't need to tell any of you, we're very much a sports crazy town. Um, and I'm excited about not just this operation, but, uh, the entire language, what we've done with Joe is he is, the language is essentially changing, so it mirrors what's in other zones. So, what, we didn't just add golf only, because I, I think this is more of a, an opportunity, particularly at Demming Road. It's a commercial area, but the buildings are really industrial. This is a use that makes sense there. Uh, you can see already, you have soccer, you have baseball, Safari Golf on the south is already in the zone. So, it really fits in with what we're already looking to do. We're just enhancing it and giving the opportunity. The good news is, as Maureen mentioned, a couple of the properties on Demming Road, either in transition or have changed hands. I think it provides a nice opportunity for continuing the reuse, or again, I would love to see a brand new building. Yeah, I'm not using my money, of course, um, but the opportunity is there. And I think these are things people want to do. The infrastructure is there already. It is Demming Road, so there's a lot of traffic here. So, I think this is a nice addition, and it really is not stringing too much from what we've already doing with the BT zones, having zones. Um, additionally, um, I love the four-season part, but it makes it tremendous. Um, it is really going to be state-of-the-art. Uh, Joe was showing with some of the different technologies they're using now. And I, I, I'm excited about it because essentially, this building has been there for anybody that's been here for quite a while. It was micron manufacturing for years, and it really, it is just sad. Other than the gentleman who owns it selling firewood, nothing's happened. So, I'm excited about this, and I think it'll help rejuvenate the area with the corner and hopefully some of these properties are getting excitement back in them. Because again, we, we want to help our residents have opportunities. We also want to try to help property owners. These are some challenging properties that, a little creativity and of course assistance from this body makes it better.
All right, thank you. Um, Maureen, is there anything that you would like to say in the call of the motion?
So, really quickly, I'm bringing up on the screen a shot of the preview, well, I have Demming Road. I'm going to give you, I'm going to start down here.
I'll hear it fast, you can talk, speaking. Did I just see both the light?
I think it was the red light. So, this is the Demming Road area as you approach the key zone, two chunks, two zone changes right there. Um, this is the plaza you were talking about. Um, these are the mix of, uh, residential style, there haven't been residential uses, some of them are residential uses. And then we move to what are, uh, industrial buildings, but yet in the BT two zone.
Yeah.
So, share with everybody. Uh, I might be able to get to the other end of the turnpike if I can find it and address for it. Um, or that gives.
Yeah, we need to go to the other end of the turnpike, yes? No, no, I think, I just wanted to see what the area was there.
Um, you.
Or, you want to go to the one?
No, I don't want you.
No, we're red light. I'm.
We're thoughtful, right?
I, I also had wanted to point out that this protect amendment and that the applicant, um, should they decide to choose a location, would be, would need to come back for a special permit application, and that is a special permit application because of the planning and zoning commission, um, for the public hearing. Um, the commission, because it is a text amendment, should, um, make a determination if it's specific with the purpose for BT two zone and. Two zone and the plan of conservation and development. Um, I have not identified any conflict that the um, the purpose of this nor. Nor the plan of conservation development, um, that was the charge of the applicant. I wanna point out that we did get um, the response letter, the referral letter back from um, Craig. We did all, and the governance, and uh, gave out a letter dated August eighth twenty twenty two, no apparent conflict regional plans and policies or the concerns of date range. Part of this amendment, um. And again, the other common beef, the building official noted that, um. If an applicant comes for the use, they have to go through from the access.
Okay, thank you, and commission, let's go with you with your question, Sandy.
Yeah, just a quick question, um. Maureen, can you confirm that that language change is what is indicated in the other um. Zones?
I I believe, um, we worked with him to mirror the language, so not all the zones that listed listed exactly the same.
Okay.
Um, this combination of wording has been. What's been the most recent amendments and the regulations that consistent with that, the we haven't gone back and. Modified language where there are already committed with different set of words, any of those uses that I listed in my staff report.
Okay.
And um, in this app, we built in, I included the, the different zones that list the different types of. For it's got like some gyms, tenants, rec, club, health and fitness, and it'd be worth slightly. Different.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Any other, oops, any other commissioners have any questions regarding the text amendment proposal? Steve Byella, I know that you're waiting patiently online, do you have any questions?
I'm good, excuse me, I'm good right now, Joe, thank you.
No problem.
I'll make the motion then to close the public here.
I motion to close the public hearing, I'll thank the second time in his jury seat for the discussion, all is a favor, I. As proposed, so, okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll circle back to you, all right, next up is a special permit site plan application, Kevin Colston at Camret LLC for the Enterprise Truck Rental Location and Related Site Plan. About six foot minutes out of map, ten dash three block eighty three lot twenty eight dash one A and one B, one nineteen and two oh seven North Street Square Road. All three unit addresses, one fifty three. Hi, how are you today?
Good evening. Um, for the record, Kevin Colston, eight Al grass of Turnpike, Winter Locks, Connecticut. Uh, I am the property development and facility manager for uh Enterprise, also uh Camret LLC. I do business at Enterprise Truck. Um, today, we come before you um to propose. Opening an enterprise truck location in the Webster Square Plaza. Right off that. Um. Enterprise Truck Division will have commercial grade trucks available for business, the person to use enterprise truck runs pickup trucks, cargo vans, parcel vans, uh, and box trucks. Or just truck being twenty six foot truck, so I'm just gonna. Go to the uh, the site plan I'm showing over here right now. It's just an overview of Webster Square to give some uh perspective of where we're looking to open within the uh, within the site there. Uh, essentially, the most recent uh opening in that was the um, the truck bar, which ironically. I will propose you go right next to the truck bar, uh, within the Webster Square there. Um, so I'm gonna just. Okay, so. Um, within that space, we're gonna lease about eighteen hundred square feet of um. Uh, currently it's, it's um vacant space within the plaza. Um, it'll be a mix of eight hundred square feet of office space, and I'll review what that looks like in a minute. Uh, and then the other thousand square feet would be uh, a bay to allow us to prep and clean the trucks within that bay. Um, the proposed parking uh for the vehicles would be next to that space, um, on the side of the space. So not in the plaza, but to the to the right of it, uh, uh, in the plaza. Uh, we're showing in this particular uh plan, we're showing, you know, a couple of box trucks, we're showing um. Seven proposed, uh, I'm sorry, seven proposed box trucks and then the bigger trucks uh next to it, and then. About seven or eight pickup trucks and cargo vans spaces within that area. Uh, so concept, essentially, customer could come to the plaza. Um, park in the front of the plaza, the retail plaza there, where everyone else parks, walk into the retail space. Rent a truck and then we take them out of side door, that would get them into where the inventory would be held. Um, and then from there, the the uh, they would exit the rear of the space and then the rear of the plaza would get out of the plaza. And in reverse, when they return, they probably return in front, and then my R staff would then bring it to the rear of the space, clean it, and they park it in the back, so. While there might be some inventory in front for, you know, five, ten minutes while they check it in, mo- all the inventory will be stored over back in the rear. Um, as well as um, during business hours, that would be planned for storing inventory, et cetera. Um. Will be no service of the vehicle, meaning there's no uh oil changes or things like that, it'll be done at, you know, off site local businesses. Um, general office hours would be Monday seven to five, Saturday nine to twelve, we'd be closed on Sundays. Terms of staffing, we're probably talking about four, four staff in this particular facility. Um, it's good range to be three or four, but that's the general staffing model for this particulars uh location. Um. So I'm just gonna. Showing you. Basic office. Basic office layout, uh, it was pretty basic, you have a, you know, counter, you have a manager's office, you have a break room. A campers room, handicap bathroom, and then the rear of that space. Um, again, is where the uh trucks would be pulled in to be cleaned, there'd be a roll up overhead door. Floor would have to pitch and to drain then, et cetera, the the water's captured, the oil water separator, and then um, go back and stand there, so. That's essentially the concept of what we're proposing, um. We currently have, in Connecticut, we have location in East Hartford, Old Zabrook, East Granby, um, and Waterbury currently. Fill in the gap in the middle there, um, to serve as um, Berlin and the theater down here, so. Um. Well, that's it.
Right, terrific, um, we're in public hearing, so is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the um? The applicant? Sorry, this proposal, okay, um, here in the uh commissioners. Oh, Chris, I didn't see Chris Ash, he was hiding behind.
Right.
You were hiding.
I'm just breaking a road.
Agree.
Uh, she does the minutes. But.
Lean in.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, is that better? Uh, I'm excited about this, we told this mission previously, um. Very excited that we are working with this national tenant to come to town. Fact that we're a little different, but I think it fits the community very well. See the growth in our specialty industrial commercial construction firms, I'm excited to have them, for when they're now coming up and growing as well as. The uh. DIYers, solvers in home. So the nice thing too is, and it's it, it's a tough space on the end of the building, it's basically as you showed, I showed. I would show it's right between the truck bar and. That's the area, so it's a tough spot, I'm excited about this, the nice thing is we're gonna have a nice national flag here, bring more people to town. Uh, I know Enterprise is a great, great company, of great things, and I'm excited to have them here in town.
Let me ask Maureen a question, oh, I'll just, just because visually, I know the plaza, and I think everyone's familiar with it, but it would kind of help if I could look at the plaza, because. The truck bar, I remember sort of terminated um at that white fencing, so are we talking about the trucks being behind the white fencing that's existing now? Where the old cinema used to, the old war was there at my level, I miss that.
That, that is correct, yeah, so, um, well, it's not the entire area that we're leasing, that's a good shot, what you're showing right there, um, zoom in a little bit closer.
So first off, I'm just gonna give you a.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Perspective, so this movie theater, this is um.
Frontage street.
Frontage, frontage. Oh, thank you, Webster Square Road, um, I like, my job is over here. Um, moved from here to this end, you have the um, medical walk-in and the freight. Um, then you have this.
Harbor for.
Harbor rate, and this large space is where the buildings have come down, and that's the slab we're talking about, um, this is the small.
You see where I am?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it'd be big enough on that screen, I know.
Oh, we're.
So this is the tenant space, and then this space here is where the truck bar is.
Oh, so you're really in a small sliver of that. Yeah, I I still figured that one out.
So this portion of the building only goes partway back.
Yeah.
Um. And there is an existing fence here, I'll bring up this G P in a second, but, um. And this is the area, I think, to this spot or further.
That's accurate.
So this spot is where there will be um re-circusing, reconfiguring, getting rid of the. Elevator.
It's an old foundation.
It's an old foundation, so you couldn't drive over it much, but they may, right now, if they'll have to do some. Some site work to make this a usable parking area, and then the truck wash going right here, correct?
That's correct.
And the tenant space go behind it is the proposed truck wash, um, the. Traffic would, as he said, they would add a door to go out to this area from the side, so then the traffic would leave this area. And most likely go the left.
Correct, yeah.
To go out, like, most people probably, they go back there, they wouldn't turn the other way, probably, they could, trucks go back there, it is a. A fairly wide drivable area, um, I wouldn't call it. It did not appear to have any hazards that um, would be concerning.
So your inventory would be fenced off, basically, by the white that was listed first.
Yeah, and if you look at the site plan a little closer, the the white picket fence, to the extent of the leased area, which which you just showed.
Yeah.
Uh, would be relocated, um, and if I can explain this well, from front to back, so if you go from the arrow, the front of the parking lot to the back. To to keep and hide the rest of what you can't see on the right there, that paved area, or the, I'm sorry, the foundation. So essentially, it's almost like you're opening a door, so that white picket fence would move to the, to the.
Here.
Exactly, thank you, um, and then we are proposing a um. Uh, ornamental fencing across the park, um.
Like an estate fencing?
Yeah.
A black estate fencing?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. Uh, two reasons, one, obviously to secure the inventory, but but secondly, so you can actually see the inventory, which. You know, is beneficial to us in terms of seeing what we're offering, or what we're, you know, what we're renting, so.
So as far as the wash base, if it's enduring, you're right next to the uh, restaurant slash truck bar.
Yep.
Uh, you covered a lot of the bases, but I just wanna make sure you have proper ventilation for the exhaust from the vehicles, so it works its way into the. Building, um, it doesn't sense to.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they'll pull it in and then turn it off, and it's not, we're not gonna run the truck in the vehicle, in the bad part, um. And the actual floor is actually gonna drop a little bit, so. Not gonna be the same level, it's gonna be slightly lower, but uh, the floor that just slabs that makes you. I don't know if I explained that well, but.
You know, I'm just not sure, I mean, I know that your intention is to move some of that white fencing, put up estate fencing, so that people could see the inventory.
Yep.
Um. I'm not sure how I feel about it, maybe I would need to have landscaping in front of that fencing or something, I I don't know, I don't wanna muddy the water too much. Um, in the sense that. I mean, I understand you want people to see your inventory, but on the other hand, I don't want. Problems with your inventory, I don't want you, them to bring on problems, you know, because we've had, you know, it adds all kinds of cat. The rash of catalytic converters and and all the other stuff that happens, you know.
Okay, we 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 understand that, hey.
Yeah.
Hey, we feel it, we're getting it, you know, drastically, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if the white fence, just leaving that there or whatever, might be more secure than. Opening it up and letting people see what the inventory is that you have, I I, it's just a thought, it's a sign of the times, unfortunately, and then of course, um. I don't know, but that's just a thought, commission.
I wouldn't be opposed to changing with the fence, but I definitely think so. Uh, more landscaping in front of it in the green area out there, break up the image of the trucks.
Yeah.
Or maybe such smaller trees, more like a trees, like, or be like fifteen. Feet tall, and nice plantings, that way, it's not, you know, it softens it here, and she can still see her inventory.
Other provisions, I mean.
Um, yeah, on the same theme with the fencing, um, you haven't mentioned any fencing to the back of the property. And um, to me, that seems like a vulnerability, um, because anybody can get that.
Yeah, um, it's a great point, was not our intention to to fence it, um. On a lot of levels, just the fencing becomes the opposite of the hit, and um. Just a wave, low, I'm not sure the fencing will work back here. Um. We do, the the site will be camera, and we do have uh, in that system, we can have it monitored as well, being if something did. Approach or walk in the lot, so there would be, you know, ways to monitor that, and let notify police, et cetera, so that that could be part of our plan to secure the inventory back there.
Um, and the other thing that we have talked about, and I don't see anything in staff comments for, is um, lending.
Yeah, it, it's an error on, on my part, that it didn't get put into the site plan, um. And so that that will be addressed, it needs to be addressed, and I'm happy to comply with the Sony regulations, sort of the regulations, and talent working, um, the building department. Give them the foot metrics, et cetera, um, so I'm happy to do that, I just, that was a business, I made.
Yeah, it's just a critical comment.
When I hire security, it's up to his hands.
Yeah, absolutely, we can't just go do it here, it was L A.
Right. So now, do I understand um, your description about the fence, um, that. Uh, I, what would be the northern part would. Swing and oh, or, I mean, is it the intention to remove? The right side of the fence?
Well, you're facing it the left side.
The part that you're not using. Section of the, okay, so that that white fence will stay there.
And yeah.
Where it will re- remove, and you'll have the estate fencing for the area that you are using.
Cor- correct, and then it was the intention of taking the existing fence you removed, and then you go front to back with it.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So so now.
Save that area.
Yes, so now you don't see the.
I got it backwards.
Yeah, yeah, so, that was the intention, so.
So on that note, are you gonna replace the whole fencing from building to building, or are you gonna have two clashing fences?
You have two, you have two. Yep.
So you have the white fence, and then you have the, I don't speak for you, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that's right, that's what it looks like. Um.
Yeah.
We're, we're open to the concept of keeping the white fence too.
How many trucks do you think we have parked out there?
What what we show on the site plan, it wouldn't, it wouldn't exceed what I'm showing, in terms of the space needed for the, the trucks, our um. Our inventory, you know, it's not a design for us to sit on inventory, just, it's not good business decision, they're they're sitting, they're not making money, and so. Um, you know, we, there's just. They're, they're sitting, they're not making money, and so, um, you know, we, there's just a general percentage that comes back, you know, at certain times of the day, and then go back out again, so. Um, we don't anticipate, you know, more inventory than what we're showing within, you know, the plan of the apartment right there, so.
All right, George, if there's any other question?
Yes, if you don't want the, uh, statements, like, the black statements from, uh, then, uh, the lighting plan, I would say that you wanna. Go with that basic thing, thing, and, and, uh. Go on, go again. Uh, lights with, uh, ours like this, all light goes down, uh, I was always worried about light. The, uh, uh, and all the border line, so, so then we, uh, go with that. Off across the end of the gun, uh, like the lights with them. Our child, that type of light will enhance that faster. And once the other part of it will do, uh, get, go, go home, that's the, the same thing, you know. You know, once you grow bigger, you go pick the rest of it.
Yeah. Okay, um, Laurie, do you have anything to add?
Well, the comment, I'm just back, right, picture again, I could swing around the parking lot and see, I don't know what the landlord, is it a, a large tenant or the, um. Control of this property as well, so I'm not sure how, what his comments may be, once he's the layman as well, and if there's conflicts with the comments we tonight. From what the advocate finds, then I'll bring it back to the, if the mission proves this, it's staff review of lighting, then if I'm concerned, I'll bring it back. But I don't know what they're likely to do, you know, once they bring it to their landlord as well, you know, I mean, we certainly don't wanna.
It might be the line of lighting hooked against the building yards.
Yeah.
Like, you know, uh, the, the.
I would.
Mark along.
I would think if it's in there, within their inventory area, it's not so much of an issue, but that's what I would hope the landlord would allow for, but. Know that we had, um, some specific applications from multiple tenants that the landlord has looked at first, then, so. Um, the, um, so in my staff comments, I wanted to point out specifically that any D. D P wastewater discharge permits and what, where they need fire district, district permits for the truck wash would be required, and they would be required anyway, but. But I'm not record, and have it, um, advise the applicant, such, um. And then the rest of the staff comments that you received from the, um, from staff, from each department as well.
All right, George, if anyone else?
Yes, I'd be along with the staff review of the lighting, I would like a staff review of a, uh. Basically, a street view rendering of what it would look like with the new fencing and some, since some, uh. Plantings, so that it just keeps a pleasant appearance, I don't want to shovel splitting a lot in half, that's always, you had kind of an offense, um. I don't think we need to see it again, I trust our staff to say that, that looks pleasant to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else, okay, um, I think that's it, because I was gonna mirror what you said, uh, is that, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm flipping between the fencing. But I think whatever you're doing in front of that, because I know that there's lawned in area, there's lawn, and then there's, um, sidewalk that passes. But we kind of need it, we can kind of spruce up whatever that area was that your business would encompass.
Small, long, like, bushes.
Yeah, it's just something to break it off, but, all right, anyway, um, so commissioned, I mean, um, we're in a public area, so. What would you like to do as well?
Motion to close the public area.
Okay, motion to close by Ms. Juzerma, second, second by Ms. Dorsey, and early discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, great, thank you, Steve. Um, moving on to the special permit site plan application, a Little House Living LLC, for making residential units, three single-family style buildings, and eight two-floor style villas. And related site plan improvements that sixteen seventy seven used to promote the turnpike, have the L twenty-two dash one, dash one fourteen, dash ten, in the B three one zone. This was continued from the August weekend agenda, okay, I just wanna get some stuff in front of me here. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Patrick Snow, uh, I'm a local businessman, residing over this field with, uh, children, I currently manage two, uh, distinct, uh, complexes, one in Berlin, one in Britain. I'm the managing member of Little House Living, and I, Little House Living is requesting Berlin Planning Zone Commission approval, concern, I'm nineteen units, I'm contributing. To service the potential residents of the town of Berlin. The objective, uh, of this proposal is to enhance the town of Berlin by replacing the existing rundown motel complex with high-demand individual apartment houses, driving hopefully new, new revenue to the town of Berlin. This new community will consist of nineteen total living units, all units will have a one-car-sized garage, two bedrooms, and two and a half baths. The building type proposed will be three single-family style units, and eight two-family style units. The maximum height proposed models is under twenty-five feet. This is relevant as I have accommodated, tried to accommodate the request of area residents that were concerned with the building heights. I presented this project to the board over nine months ago, when they asked for a C well's approval. I am pleased to report that the proposed community received well approval, at the well's meeting, there was extensive discussion, discussion on the stormwater management, with respect to the community post-construction. And how made impact the neighbors located on Holly Court. The data presented at the well's meeting showed an improved, uh, improvement post-construction from the current condition on the site. I will leave the details to Jim Cassidy, professional engineer working on the site, to compute later. Neighbor, the neighbors abiding this project located on Holly Court have expressed some concerns for construction of this new community in the town of Berlin. Little House Living LLC looks to be a cooperative and community-driven company. By being such an entity, it's intended to meet the concerns of the abiding neighbors with solutions. The concerns which have been expressed are as follows, along with the Little House Living LLC's solutions to those concerns. Increased stormwater runoff after construction. The data, which will be presented on a pre and post-development, shows that the post-construction stormwater runoff can be less than it is today. As stated previously, the engineer will view this data with commission, as was done and approved with the well's commission. Number two, number two, the new community residents accessing, so the Little House Living community residents accessing the Holly Court neighborhood. While no one can control every aspect of the ten actions, I would, uh, design this so the flow would not be convenient for anyone to fall to walk down the, um, Holly Court. We've also this evening, it's not shown on the plan, but we've agreed to install a fence along the, if you're looking at the property on the left-hand side, uh, towards the auto body neighborhood, and along the backside, which addresses the Holly Court, which would. Deter anyone from walking through events and through a large, uh, buffer area. Um, the third concern was increased car traffic. Uh, this concern was expressed at the Economic Development Commission's meeting on March seventh, the traffic report contained this submission, I review this concern. Conclusion made by the traffic engineer, uh, is that based on the relatively low volume of peak hour traffic, in his professional opinion, the local road network will be capable of accommodating the site, like the traffic lines. Uh, this conclusion is based on data which was compiled and presented in this report submitted to the staff. Fourth, the buffer area between properties was a concern of the, uh, Holly Court neighbors. Initial proposing housing, housing showed the units being constructed twenty-two feet from the property line. The original proposal mimed zone requirements of, et cetera. After reviewing the, uh, concern in the field conditions, um, and my goal to demonstrate cooperation and partnership with the neighborhood. I have revised those, those houses along the, the Holly Court, now the distance between the property line and the first house is thirty-five feet, which is, uh. Required this to only be fifteen feet, and it increased to thirty-five, so. But I've also agreed to this evening, is on, on the left-hand side, I can't, we're gonna, our goal is to get twenty-five foot to the, um, property line, to the, to the new houses. Currently, we don't show that, um, we were speaking prior to the meeting, I said, I was trying to get to twenty-five, if I, if the engineer could look at that and make that work, maybe twenty-two, but there'll be an increase. Between that side and what is shown in the fantasy, and I started to last minute change what we just spoke about. Um, I look forward to working with the neighborhood and the commission to make the community a new part of Berlin, and with that, I will turn over the presentation to the site.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer, first full in the firm, I'll see you here, Steve Cassidy, here today, I'm saying Little House, uh, LLC. Uh, proposed development property in sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike, uh, the first, uh, map panel, serial photo, uh, you know, of the door is showing the site, uh, as it actually stood before, uh, what it was, a motel complex. Uh, the motel buildings and all the other structures on the property have actually been removed at this point, um, the only things remaining is the two new driveway, uh, curb cuts of the Berlin Road. But on the plane you see before you, uh, the property itself is outlined in yellow, uh, presently, uh, zone B two-one, uh, we're proposing a, to use a recently adopted and fill regulation TV. Uh, for adaptive reusable motel sites. Uh, the site itself is located about two hundred fifty feet north of, uh, that, that lane. Uh, on the right-hand side of Rock East is the Berlin Turnpike, uh, it is on the southbound side of the Berlin Turnpike, uh, it's bounded on, on the north or the upper portion. Um, by property of sixteen sixty, Berlin Turnpike LLC, I believe that's actually a T shot today, uh, it's bounded on the west or to the left, uh, by existing residents along Holly Court. Uh, there's bounded on the south, um, by property of BAC Realty, uh, it's one of the family, so, on the south side of the property. Uh, the property, uh, in this photo, where it used to contain, uh, there were eight small buildings that were rented, this small, um, hotel residences. In addition to, there were two larger buildings up towards the front of the property, uh, there was office and residence. Uh, in addition to, uh, as you look at the site today, in that photo, uh, there's actually three curb cuts into the site, so the majority of the frontages present paid. Um, topography of the, of the site, uh, you actually drop down a grade, uh, for the Berlin Turnpike, uh, at a moderate grade, as you go on, to the left, to, to the west. Uh, eventually, at the westley property line, there's a steeper grade as it goes down to Holly Court. Off on the upper portion of the north portion of the property, you see that, uh, tree line, uh, within that tree line, there's an existing water course, uh, basically, it's a man-made drainage swale. Uh, that drainage swale picks up a large area of drainage, Berlin Turnpike approximately fifty-two acres, uh, eventually conveying it down through the drainage swale, that contains one of the backyard of the house, Holly Court. In addition to, on the bottom portion, uh, it's also a drainage swale, uh, that's picking up runoff, uh, from the, uh, workshop, and then I would say the southerly portion of the site. Um, let's look at page here.
I need to slide it off with those top, stick room.
I do think I'm bringing up the joint, because we, we gave you the chair file.
You have the regular say.
So this is the aerial view, the same one, as I believe, just without his yellow line, I'll, I'll see. And then, I'll go to that chair file.
Yeah, uh, we can.
The chair file is.
No, it's. Oh, okay, you have, I'm joined, so I'm sorry.
Uh, so going on to. Uh, the site plan, uh, is, uh, Mr. Stone had mentioned, uh, we're proposing to do.
I did that, really.
Sure, they can. Sure.
It might show up on the camera on the front screens, I'm not going to.
Uh, what we're proposing to do is to, uh, develop this property, uh, and state multi-family, uh, development, uh, under the new D D, uh, regulation, overlay regulation. Um, what we're proposing to do is to construct, uh, nineteen, uh, new dwelling units.
I'm good, close.
Sorry.
That's all right.
That might. Soft talk or all sorts of stuff.
Yeah.
Definitely. Um, so we're proposing to develop it with nineteen new residential, uh, the development's gonna consist of the duplex buildings, sixteen units, and then every three single units. Uh, access to the site, center of the Berlin Turnpike, uh, we're looking at removing all the curb cuts, they're presently out there, building one, now we're, uh, you know, mark curb cut towards the center of the site. Uh, this curb cut will provide access around the driveway, uh, it has an island, so it's center, similar to what's out there today, with the, uh, former motel complex, but, uh, the larger. Driveway going around the circumference would be about twenty-four feet width, uh, on that driveway, there would be an individual driveway to each one of the units. Um, it's, um, it's just, though I mentioned, uh, what we're proposing is that each unit would have a dedicated garage, um, itself. In addition to, uh, there'd be driveway space and a parking department, so each unit provides two parking spaces. Uh, in addition to, uh, we take a look at the location of units on the left-hand side, uh, as Mr. Stone had mentioned, originally started with development plans. Uh, those units were about twenty, twenty-two feet off of that westley prompted line, the regulation requires fifteen feet, uh, I've. Extensively thought, uh, to actually get it relocated, we could actually go out there and take a look at the existing, uh, there's an existing, um. Tree row along that property line, in addition to the sloping, and that is, I thought it'd be better to pull back, so we actually revised it, we actually lost the, doing it, and pulled it back, so it's actually a minimum of thirty-five feet. Did that basically, so we don't impact the structure of the existing trees that are out there, uh, and also gives a more beautiful backyard behind the units. The existing motels, uh, there were buildings around there, about twenty feet off the property, that's where I actually picked them, fifteen feet additional from, uh, what was on that, that side. Um, on the north and on the south side, uh, those buildings are presently about seventeen feet off the line, I did talk to Saul a little while, Mr. Stone, uh, just prior to the meeting. And asked if there's anything we can do on the south side or the lower portion to move those units, uh, I think we do have a little, little room where I can pick up some additional real estate, I'm not sure, I can get a total of twenty-five feet, I'm sure I can pick up some. Additional room there to get closer to twenty-five feet on that side. Uh, was also mentioned, uh, about, as part of our well's application, we want to do an extensive review of stormwater, which we, uh, I put one more page, uh, this is. This is a copy of, you know, drainage, as part of the package, as I mentioned previously, we take a look at the, the whole site slopes away from the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, what we did in our, our assessment of storm drainage on this, is we took a look at three different areas, uh, presently, everything sheet blows off, there's no actual normal drainage on the site. Uh, so the three areas we looked at, it's that drainage swale that's on the south side of the property, uh, we looked at the westley prompted neighborhood that goes back down to the Holly Court. And then also off to the north, as mentioned, is a large drainage swale, a big portion of the Berlin Turnpike. Um, if you take a look at it today, uh, it's a little bit of a crown in the center of the property, so the water, the runoff, it goes in all directions as it comes off the site. Uh, we wanted to make sure we're not impacting the joint property owners, uh, so what we did is part of our storm drainage design, number one, within the driveway system. We have a series of catch bases, conduits between the catch bases to collect the runoff in the road, driveway itself. In addition to, uh, we incorporated a drainage system, so it actually picks up all the roof leaders for all units in this building. Um, that whole system, uh, eventually conveys all the stormwater runoff, is collected up to the large, direct, I can see, you know, the left-hand corner of the page. That's an underground drainage system, so it's, it's a combination of infiltration systems, consists of a series of, um, of, um, polyethylene units. Uh, and what it does is allow some of the water to infiltrate back into the ground, when a groundwater recharge. Uh, any excess water, uh, that can handle or go into the ground, uh, there's a control structure on, uh, which then will allow it to discharge through the level spreader and continue off the drainage swales of the norm. Uh, so it's, it's, it's designed in accordance with D P, uh, water quality manual, uh, to try to promote groundwater recharge, in addition to the outlet, uh, proposed level spreader, uh, to have. Even flow as it continues off to the water, where's the majority of the water comes today. Uh, more importantly, uh, take a look at the west, uh, by connecting all the roof leaders to the driveways, uh, into the system. It takes a pretty substantial, uh, drainage area from the site away from those properties to the west, so what it actually does is the runoff. So what it actually does is the runoff that's going over the top of the slope down to that property, it actually cuts that flow of about half. Similarly off the south, uh, some manmade drainage swale, uh, that eventually drains down the Hollywood Court. Uh, we're picking up a large portion, uh, they've also gone soft itself, uh, that goes into the system, uh, and there's a reduction. Flow running off the south, so I think to the south, to the, um, to the west, uh, we've drastically improved the amount of water that's going on the site. Based upon that, uh, we built a whole stormer model, we submitted extensive drainage part as part of this application. Uh, with the model forum, find this one model, including the fifty-two acres coming out of the Berlin Turnpike. We find post development that we have a slight decrease flow at that direction as it goes off to the. To the Hollywood Court, uh, again, but unfortunately, I've been in this business for thirty-five years, and that's one of my portages is dealing with drainage systems. Uh, and I'm more comfortable, uh, with the, um, design of the system, to feel that the model appeared, uh, was more than adequate. Uh, again, we're trying to incorporate a lot of measures to actually improve drainage situations, uh, to join properties. Other things we need to look at, our site utilities, um, there's presently a sanitary lateral, uh, from the old hotel site. That goes down, uh, to Hollywood Court, uh, along the west side of the property. Uh, we're going to be reusing the sanitary lateral, uh, there'll be a series of gravity veins, uh, that are constructed in the driveway, which is tied into it. They connect into the lateral back down to Hollywood Court. Water, that's presently an individual water service that comes out of Hollywood Court. Uh, because we're upgrading services and required to have a fire hydrant on site, it cannot use that water lateral. So we're constructing a new watering system off the Berlin Turnpike, moving through our property. Uh, which by individual services to each one of the houses, in addition to fire hydrant on site, uh, by fire protection. All of the utilities, uh, such as a ledger, uh, telephone, and communication, uh, would be in the ground, whereas right now, overhead, uh, so everything is in the ground. The other thing I'd like to bring up is landscaping, uh, there was a landscaping, I submitted as part of the application. Just trying to see if I got my plan set here. So in your, in your package, you've actually got two plans, a couple of things that we're doing as part of the landscaping. You'll see all the green circles along the more side of the project, that's the side that's up against drainage well. We're proposing to, uh, cover the, cover the body, hedgerow on the entire side of the property. Uh, there's a system of thirty, uh, green giant arborvitaries, but it's hedgerow. In addition to, uh, we want to make it feel like a residential neighborhood, so we're proposing to put a series of street trees. Uh, around the whole perimeter of the roadway in front of each of the houses, uh, the street trees are proposing, uh, consists of some perch, uh, some linden, uh, plant trees. You know, it's a skate. Uh, I apologize, I can't, there was four trees we selected in total, but we're looking at having a total of thirty street trees scatter, uh, along the frontage of the houses. In addition to, uh, along the Berlin Turnpike, whereas today, there's really no landscaping on the site. If you continue on to the second page, uh, because this is more of a residential flair, uh, what we've also done. Is we gave a prototype of whole landscaping for each front of the unit, uh, some type of foundation things, so on this plan. What was it to do with, um, the driveway, have a small walkway to the front of the unit. Uh, in addition to, uh, we're proposing the kind of series of landscaping shrubs, uh, on the walkway, front foundation. Uh, I didn't get specific for each particular unit, we typically done this work successfully on the projects, is we give a menu of options. Uh, there's a specific number that needs to go in front of each building, but if you go down below, there's planting options of different type of bushes that can be put in. The complement in each unit, uh, as they're being constructed, also given the own, um, sense of, uh. So now. Players are going to go in front of each one of the units. Uh, so the final thing that I'll talk about, uh, because our traffic engineer is not here to see. Uh, since I did review the graphic study, um, and I'm sure as everyone's well aware about, uh, the turnpike is a very, as well. Uh, Berlin Turnpike sees the average daily traffic flow of thirty-two thousand six hundred vehicles. Um, the proposed change of use, yes, it will increase the overall number of trips. Uh, based upon hotel and motel use, it used to be, it used to generate probably about thirty-five trips a day. Uh, based upon a residential use, I would generate about two hundred and thirty-seven, so there's an increase. What you're doing in traffic study, what you're doing is you're looking at impact of level service, level services, if you look at the intersections between the roadways. Does that change, uh, constitute a degradation of the time of delay at that intersection? And again, if you're looking at traffic volume of thirty-two thousand six hundred, uh, daily, uh, in compared to, uh, increase of about two hundred. Uh, what we found, based upon a simple analysis, uh, of the different intersection style, including site drive, that looked at the lighting lights to the north and south. Uh, when we find that for that minimal increase of traffic, uh, which is far less than one percent. You do not see a degradation of the level of service, again, level of service is the amount of delay that you have in that intersection. The worst intersection, uh, of level of service you see is actually the site I'm leaving, which actually functions very nicely. Because the one advantage is location is right turn in, right turn out, you can't wait to go, you can't make a left. There usually has to be a problem, you're trying to make the left, you're crossing traffic, and that never happens. So we find, uh, that the level of service, uh, at the exit driveway, worst case, uh, with the basically a growth factor to give us completionist project, probably two thousand twenty-three. Uh, worst case, it'd be level service C, uh, but that would be, uh, at, at the site drive itself. And again, that's the same level of service, uh, as it would function today, so there's no degradation of the service. Uh, and we had this traffic study prepared by press, uh, Essek Associates, uh, and they specialized traffic study, it's conclusion, uh, it's confident. That we'll not see a degradation of the whole service. So I think the only other thing we need to add is, we have Brian Miller. We have Brian Miller and Lloyd Pannett, uh, appear in the affordability report as part of this mission package. Uh, I'm not sure, I thought Brian would be online, able to talk to that. Brian, are you there? And, okay, so, so that's going to conclude my portion of the presentation. I'm trying to get touch with Brian for a second.
Yeah, don't worry, we'll have plenty of questions, okay. Go ahead, can I get? Um, I, uh. A recollection, it is, um, on the western side of the plan, um, the existing trees, um, are going to remain, uh, is that still the plan?
Yes.
And so, and there's going to be defense in addition to that?
That's something I've had brought up this evening, it's not on the plan right now, uh, we're talking to the property itself, they agreed to the fence. But he asked my recommendation as to whether we should continue it on the Westley property, and I agree, it should be extended in complement the, the existing vegetation that's out there. I don't think it should be, uh, between it. I, I think it's.
We're not close talkers, we can are hyper talk.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, so you need to agree to continue effects down that side, I wouldn't cut trees, I would work the fence. Uh, either one side or the other, uh, as you go out there, you find that there is an opening in the bottom, uh, the vegetation, there's, there's cedars on that side. So the bottom, the bottom branches are off, um, but this would definitely, uh, complement the screening inserted.
Um, I've, uh, made it a point to pay attention as I drive by, um, to the site and, um. Have noted that the lower branches of those existing trees really do hang quite low. And, um, the trees remain, uh, or aren't quite tall, um, and offer quite a bit of screening. Uh, and provide for some privacy, so, um, I wanted to be sure that, that they were going to stay.
Again, that was one of the reasons I put lots of movement buildings, so we don't impact those trees, certainly.
Yeah, now, um, the, uh, choice of all our varieties along the north are boundary. Um, I would, uh, ask or, uh, see if you would consider, uh, mixing them. Um, only because if you know other properties that use our varieties, uh, these days, that are varieties are getting. Um, chewed up by bag worms, and the bag worms are completely depolishing the trees and wiping entire sections out. So, um, I would ask that you would maybe consider a mixed variety of trees there. Um, the other question that I have is, um, about, I actually have a bunch of questions, but, uh, uh, lighting on the site.
That's a good point, because we're going to apply your application, um, so we were thinking this is more of a residential subdivision. Residential development, whereas, uh, we're working with our resource, uh, to provide lighting, uh. That being said, I'll, most of the lighting would be streetlights along the roadway system. There would be no lights to rear, other than a typical residential, uh, scot, hall scot, uh, on the back. Uh, but any lights, regular light poles, if you all within the roadway, you can find, but all of it, so. Uh, if the commission like, uh, I can work with my, with my light business and come up with a budget explaining. But just basically, I can tell you based on the location, the house struggling it from the backyard, it's not going to be straight over onto many properties.
Um, and then, uh, I also noted that there were no dumpsters, so with the plan.
It's so it's resident, regular, regular residential development, everybody will have their own, uh, trash can, uh, at the side. It would be serviced, they come through, just like a regular residential subdivision, it's not going to be individual dumpster on the same.
Uh, and so is that, uh. Is that going to be, uh, through town services, or is it going to be like an association?
It would have to be a private, private service, without. It's simply a private service.
So it'd be a smaller truck, we're not talking like major, uh, trash truck, trying to get in and out there.
It's not going to be a, for a truck that would pick up a dumpster, no, it's going to be like your typical recycling truck where it's earning a profit.
Oh, yeah. Well, they can do it, but, um, so, um, and then the other thing that, um, just kind of, uh. Stand out to me, uh, is the lack of open space for the residents, uh, like a community space.
So, uh, a couple things, number one, uh, that was, again, one of my concerns, it really is accurate area, uh, so that's why we pulled a lot of the tunes back when we would make. So we actually have some private open space behind each one. Uh, we do have an area that's northwest of the corner where the other ground system, that is a lawn area, um, we can't propose some kind of, uh. Mostly recreation space, but some kind of a seed area or, um, you know, so something, uh, exit, you know, systems and across is basically a lawn area. Uh, now for the left corner, so, uh, we can. Like, or some kind of a, a small recreation area in there.
Uh, how large is this space, is that?
Uh, the area.
This space, correct.
Yeah, I think.
No, that's very large.
That's what's, I, I'd rather take a look at it, I want to. Just watch some footage out there, take a look at it, give you a better representation, we'll see what we can do with it.
I'll follow, thanks.
Good questions.
Well, we are in public hearing, I know we have a public hearing, so I'm assuming that some folks wanted to address the commission about that, so. Uh, you've been waiting patiently, so is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? That would be the time to request, that would be the time to speak up. If you do, we ask that you come and use the microphone, state your name and address, and don't be nervous, because we don't find. Uh, at least we're not probably, we bar a lot, but I don't think. Um, but, uh, all comments are welcome at this time. Can I ask, would you like to leave, like, this plan up, or would you rather? Um, I think you can leave the plan up, and then, uh, we'll see, you know.
Thank you.
So, well, and I, I just want to remind each speaker that they've been signing it before they start, I would be finished, but yes. The finding, yeah, I know everybody wants to speak, so.
Yeah, well, that helps with our work.
At least, and they can, at least when they finish, they can remember to sign it.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're seeing, I'm at seventeen Hollywood Court. I know they stated some of my concern, I just wanted to restate, um, I may be repetitive, I think I have already answered it, but I just want to go over. From the fire meeting, um, what had been a concern within our neighborhood. Um, there was a statement in their motion, I said, in addition to the frontage on State Highway five fifteen. The track may have access on other roads, if the planning and zoning commission finds traffic conditions warranted. This section does concern me, the access point to the housing units on the State Highway five fifteen in Berlin Turnpike. Everyone knows the Berlin Turnpike, it gets very busy, draw the day and evening. My concern, as stated in their motion, states that they may have other access to other roads. The only other road is Hollywood Court, which probably holds it back. Main reason why we, majority of our, our hub on Hollywood Court due to the quarter back. Forty-eight Hollywood Court owns ninety-five percent of the land at the end of the quarter back. And we are worried that it can be taken by a maniac company. The town could cite safety issues for entering and exiting sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike. And take enough land at the end of Hollywood Court to construct a large driveway, not a road, a driveway into the compound. We would like to have in writing and or on title for the town that this would not happen, and we do not lose our quarter sack for Hollywood Court. My other concern is parking, there are nineteen dwellings on that property that allows two cars for each dwelling. That is about thirty-eight cars at the, at any given time in that area when all units are full. There are no visitor parking, events occur all the time, birthday parties, holidays, normal gatherings. That will add additional cars to that area with no space to park. And even less space when more than one household is throwing an event. There are also no general areas for kids to play, and the yards are, even though they pushed it back in the property line, the yards are still small. Uh, my concern is that when an event or a party takes place, family and friends park on the coast street, which is Hollywood Court. This adds traffic to our street, and makes it unsafe for our kids to play, ride bikes, and use their scooters. I would hope that you would take into consideration the safety of my kids, my neighbors' kids who have went down the street for many years. This with not enough parking could also be a liability. Kids and adults cutting through the earth on Hollywood Court to go up to their friends and family's house because there is not enough parking could cause a liability, which could cause them to. Have a claim against the homeowner's insurance and/or litigation if it does go that far. If any injury occurs on forty-eight Hollywood Court, fifty-one Hollywood Court, that could be their fault, and a claim could be filed to their. Insurance, which can possibly have their insurance go up if they were to pay it out. When in reality, knowing this, the town could prevent that from the beginning before these buildings even go or start to go. We request, I know we have stated, an eight-foot privacy fence, the whole long, the length of the whole back line of the property. To prevent any cuts, uh, cut through and liability so known to make a claim against the housing. My last concern, I will bring up tonight, is the effect that it will have on schools. They stated it is designed for downsizing adults and young professionals. Are they going to only allow downsizing adults and young professionals to move to go home? Are they going to turn away a mother with two kids who is able to in there with one, in one of these buildings? It will violate the Fair Housing Act. They can't pick and choose who lives there, they can't push a twenty-five-year-old adult with two kids away and have a twenty-five-year-old, year-old. Young professional adult with no kids move into that house. Everyone knows that it will violate the Fair Housing Act. Realistically, no adults with young children will move, with children will move in there. How will that affect the schools? Will rezoning happen? Will my kids who go to Willard have to be rezoned due to the development? Will the town have to accommodate additional buses for these children? Will these kids go to Willard and the class sizes grow, or hire more teachers? Is there even enough room in Willard School for that to happen? All this has to be considered before anything happens.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission now? I do, so, yes, ma'am.
Hi there, my name is, uh, Petra Riley. This little material, sure, can. And I reside on one hundred Peter Harley Road, right around the corner, and I, uh, because I'm five hundred feet within this proposal. I received notification of this, um, dense, high-density rental property. We'd like to put up at sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike. Right off from I would like to inquire if the newly submitted petition to abolish the Pan Plan Residential Infill Development Text Amendment. That was submitted July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, along with a multi- That was submitted July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, along with a multitude of neighboring signatures. Has it been read or considered at all by planning and zoning board? We say you have it up?
Yes, you have it ready.
Um, because it's been over uh, a month since it has been submitted. When can a date be set when we could uh, discuss this text amendment? The neighbors of, you know, the neighboring, if that's possible.
I, I'm sorry, Maureen, why set that date at the beginning of the hearing? That, that public hearing was scheduled as item C.
Yeah.
October sixth. Petition for the proposed text amendment, lead section eleven D B, planned residential infill development, by October seventh, suggested date, October sixth.
Yes, thank you for that. So it'll be October.
October sixth.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, our petition to abolish. Is an effort to rescind the testimony that was produced at the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning and Zoning meeting. We're trying in hopes that you're able to give a yes or no, and you did tell us that you do have a date for setting, that uh, that's very good. There are certainly a lot of federal dollars that are floating around our fair state of Connecticut. And it makes perfectly good sense that all developers are very eager to take advantage regarding the proposed old motel site. At the same time, this needs to be beneficial and doable for the town of Berlin as well. Right from the get-go, the proposed high-impact rental units on one point nine acres of land didn't seem very realistic. And perhaps should have not been considered. Horrible housing ownership is a far better way to go for our town and also for the homeownership colors. From where I am sitting, it looks as though only a few changes have been made from the original application. And very far from satisfactory. Cutting the high-impact rental units from twenty to nineteen in number. With minor changes to buffer zoning and height growing adjustments is far from acceptable. If the property is changed from commercial to residential, town buffer regulations need to be enforced and respected. Fifty-foot buffers need to be maintained at the back of the units and twenty-five feet on each side. The proposed fifteen feet, or was it seventeen, uh, separation between the units is far from acceptable. With not only the possibility of hearing your next-door neighbor flush his toilet, but far more seriously, firecrates could very easily transfer from one unit to the next. The height of the individual homes at the rear are still too high. The one point nine acres of property would be better suited for a lesser amount of rental units or ownership units. It would also be an advantage for the traffic overload, as we've talked about on the Berlin Turnpike. Which seems to have increased worth over the twenty-eight years that I lived in Berlin. Do we really need to make awareness? Um, where this is a real positive dollar proposal for developers. We are in hopes that planning and zoning seriously scrutinize this application. This proposal is not advantageous to the town of Berlin at all. We are, in all sincerity, looking forward to an immutable solution to this very lengthy situation. And firmly request that this letter be submitted with tonight's finish. Before I submit that to.
Okay, uh, yes, you can just.
I'll take it to the, they have complete file record.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Good evening, Patty Virgio, twenty-seven, Holly Court. The residents of Holly Court would like to be obscured from viewing the development as much as possible. During the winter months with bare trees, the development will be very visible to the homes on Holly Court. Furthermore, the houses in the development will have a direct view to our homes, possibly even into our windows as they tower over our homes. One of the main reasons for many of us to purchase on Holly Court was the privacy. And we now feel that our privacy is being compromised. The residents of Holly Court are asking for an eight-foot stockade fence on the two sides in the rear. We are very concerned for the possibility and the probability that Holly Court will incur extra parking as a result of its development. We are also concerned for the possibility of people cutting through Holly Court to access the development. We would also like to comment on section one of the Planned Residential Infill Development. The requirements of section nine C shall not apply to section eleven D D, but the commission may impose landscaping, screening and buffer conditions. It determines necessary for public health, welfare and safety. Why shouldn't the standards that fourth and section nine C apply? Under nine landscaping buffer requirements, such as landscaping buffer shall consist of no fewer than two rows of suitable evergreen shrubs and trees of at least six feet in height. Planted at a density sufficient to obscure lights and other visually. Objective items, staggering and adjoining rows or other landscaping treatments deemed acceptable. Current land of comprehensive development states all new residential developments should properly support existing neighborhoods. The greatest concern we have is the negative impact on our property values, our peace of mind and emotional well-being. High-density housing will permanently alter our entire neighborhood, including the relationship with its two commercial neighbors. The units will now be thirty-five feet away from forty-eight and fifty-one Holly Court's boundary line. But they will still tower over us. We want the unit back fifty feet where they have brought us and twenty-five feet on each side where the neighboring, neighboring commercial properties are. This is the underlying zoning BT one zone, we ask that this be enforced. We prefer commercial use for this property because the buffers in commercial property is more conducive to our neighborhood and friend situation.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
We, oh, hi. Hi. Wonderful. I thought she loses from the.
I'm super.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Barbara Wade, um, I reside at uh, twenty-five Edgewater Circle, Berlin. Uh, I recently relocated here from Saratoga Springs and I'm now arriving in Berlin. And when I came here this spring, I was looking for a rental home for my daughter, myself, that had a three-standing unit. It wasn't a big apartment complex that had, you know, upstairs and, you know, side neighbors. I'm looking for a community that would allow me to meet new people in a property that I could be proud to live in, that had an attractive clean environment. And that community that uh, Patrick Snow was proposing is that, and I was very disappointed that it wasn't available and I looked all throughout Berlin. Um, initially during my journey to find new housing, I ironically met numerous people and I was telling them, I'm trying to find a rental. Um, like to relocate here, my daughter's doing gymnastics down here, and they would recommend. The property in Berlin that I had nothing to, I didn't know, a couple times, they say, oh, well, you should really check out this property in Berlin. And I learned that it was this community. Um, I would see multiple references independent of that, so. I know in this time, big businesses, it's Terry, change happens, and I just wanted to say, for what it's worth. That um, knowing that you have an owner that the local family that lives in this community and has two other um, complexes that I'm highly recommended, I thought. Might be relevant for people, so I subsequently relocated down to Edgewater, um, town home to around, if I called that late down there. Um, Silver Lake, yeah, and every time I pass, it's so dark down that way, I'm like, again, I'm new from New York. And it's like so dark down that way, and I always look and I'm like, gosh, it'd be so nice if there was like, you know, a, a upbeat kind of, you know. Healthy, clean environment around there for my daughter and I, um, because it is a dark area, so anyway, that's all I had, I just wanted to tell you about the other properties.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Oh, no.
You took it to sleep. I know it's late.
Yes, I have my.
Okay, my name is Irene James, I live in fifty-one Holly Court. I live across from my neighbor, Linda, she told me if I didn't get up and she was.
Oh.
I've lived in Berlin for over forty, about forty-eight years, they're my age. And the old motel that you're talking about, I lived, they were in, right up the hill over there, but I never had a problem with them. And I keep hearing them say about the motel, the motel, Berlin Turnpike is known for the motel. What are people gonna live when you think about it? And they keep talking about affordable housing? The rents are crazy, they keep building these buildings, it's right here in Berlin. Who can afford a, I think, seven, ten eighteen hundred dollars a month? They gotta wake up, we're in a recession. And you keep building these buildings, people are not gonna have any place to, to live, you know, they gotta be affordable, if you say affordable. It gotta be affordable. Unless you're building for people that live in New York or something, come out here. Where the rents are cheaper than in New York, but in Berlin, they're not that cheap in New Brick Island. Like I said, I lived out there for forty-eight years, when I moved back there, like they stated, there's a cold attack, quiet, no problem. But not able to put people buildings up there. It's sixteen seventy-six, Berlin Turnpike, it's seventeen feet from our property. Our property is on an elevation of a hundred and eighteen feet. This system will be built underground at an elevation of one twenty-eight. This is a ten-feet drop to our house. We are afraid that if there was one more catastrophe storm, we have a large storm. Event and the system couldn't hold any more water, we would be sitting ducks. We would have major flooding of our lower level. Of our, of our concrete slab could be undermined, undermined, causing significant flooding, flooding. That there is a roof in the back of my house. And I have had flooded, it overflowed. The water overflowed, the town came out and, and I didn't realize, maybe I for own it, but uh. The town had been coming out cleaning it and they put a pipe down because the water would come down, backyard be flooded. There's trees that hang over from the other property on my property, weeping goes. It's terrible, and that water comes down from the Berlin Turnpike. And I mean, it'd be a, a mess, I ain't gonna say it would be in it, but it'd be a mess. Okay, if the building were built under uh, the BT one zone regulation, with the fifty-foot near buffer. As we asked before, all the eggs, you know, you put all the eggs in one basket, infiltration system would be located farther away from us. This will be less of a worry to us, since there will be more area for natural drainage. And you have to realize, if you wanna fix that come, if the zoning board commission approve the high-density housing. We ask the following, that the town board, the percolation test hole on the east side of our property. To test the soil drainage in late fall before the infiltration system is installed. We also ask that the town test the percolation test hole once the system is operational during the rainy season. We ask for written guarantee for the development, that as if the system is compromised and we have more storms. And water flooded, that will, that, that he will pay, that they will pay for the drainage to our home. We and our neighbors want an eight-feet stock, stock expense bordering. The property of the three sizes, this will give us a sense of safety, security and privacy. We also ask for the town, we also want two rows of evergreens planted on the project. Side of the fence to help with, with our, with the sound then. But the trees that are planted now, former gentleman that owned, his name was Forrest, he put those trees there, there was no trees there when we moved in. But he put those trees overgrown, they needed to be trimmed down. There's trees there, he put them there on the property, because before, when I moved there, there was no trees there. So the uh, first owner, I guess he was the first owner, he put them there, his name was John Forrest. But I just like to say, you know, we live there, it's called the side street. People, like she said it before, that people don't have any place to park if you have visitors. And you gonna build property over there, where they gonna park? They can't park them for a Berlin Turnpike. Where, where they gonna go? They can't go to the garage. And you got another place that you know, an antique shop, and you got the keepy home shop there. But the people will not have any place to park. I don't care, you say it's only gonna be this many units. But if you got company, like you say, you, your family come over, where do you go park? We have to think about that, we have to think about that, that's all I have to say, thank you. I didn't mean to preach, but I did.
I would just buy a spot where I really love that. Anyone else?
Okay.
Sorry, a little bit behind. Dr. Machinage.
Okay, um, my name is Sherry Rice, thirty-eight, Holly Court. I did prepare a statement, um, seems we all have a thing, and so a lot of what we're saying is competitive. Um, I first wanted to set off by uh, thanking. Well, and the engineer for hearing some of our concerns and adjusting the plan. Um, some of the stuff that he presented tonight is the first time we're hearing it, so again, some of the stuff we're saying may be. Um, repeated if things need to be addressed, so uh, bear with me. Uh, good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to express our concerns. And the concerns of our neighborhood regarding the proposed development of sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike. At the PNC meeting on November eighteenth, one of our Holly Court neighbors requested that an environmental impact analysis be completed. To date, we are not aware this has been done. Per Berlin zoning regulations, all applications for central permits shall include environmental information for the purposes of complying. A complete environmental impact analysis, the environmental statement shall adjust at, at the following. Uh, the likely impact of the proposed development on the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood to address some issues. As congestion on public streets, harmony with surrounding developments and effect on property values and overall neighborhood stability. We believe that this proposal, the proposed development, disdistributes all aspects of the above statement. The complex would be two-story duplex dwellings amongst a budding ranch and raised ranch neighborhoods and two current properties. The dwellings would be approximately twenty-five, twenty-four feet in height, in addition to a ten-foot incline from Holly Court. Making these dwellings almost thirty-five feet above our neighborhood. Proposed complex is going to have two visitor spots for each unit, um, which again. It's settled here in holidays and things of that nature with, with the parking. Um, we were only overfill parking, go to our neighborhoods with, to our neighborhood which abus the properties and the businesses to which. Uh, the cars parked on the side causes traffic congestion. We believe that the proposed complex will often have an impact on property values, the units are designated as rental properties. Which like it or not, is not ideal for potential homeowners, therefore reducing the price of what potential buyers. Maybe wanting to pay, in and of itself, the idea of nineteen-unit complex and all that comes with it on a small one point nine acre of land. Is nonsensical, our mayor even drove by the property and said that it was difficult for him to envision how many units, how that many units fit on that property. Um. The extent to which it's uh, any sensitive environmental features on the site may be disturbed, and what measures shall we take to mitigate these impacts? Considerations should be given to steep slopes, including erosion control, wetlands, drainage ways, vegetation and other land features. Considered to be significant. Um, there is an upward slope at the end of Holly Court that would lead up to the proposed complex, which has that. Which we've been steadfast in our concern for flooding the water issues due to the size of this complex and the lack of um, open space. Especially with the cove that runs behind, um, additionally making way for water hookups. So we, in the original proposals, we were under the impression that they were gonna have to come down our cul-de-sac to hit water. Because you were told that the previous motel got water from our street. Um, I believe the engineer said tonight that they would have to put their own waterway up there, so that would. No longer have to come down to our street, because we are concerned that the vegetation would be taken away, then opening a big, almost walkway of. Almost walkway up to this complex, um, if the town did have to come and hook the water up. So that was something that he adjusted tonight that we weren't aware of before. Um. Analysis of how the proposed project will affect various town services, such as police, fire, school, and recreation. Um, as another neighbor indicated, that said that. The original proposal said that development is expected to have minimal impact on town resources, including school systems, and that it is designed for downsizing adults and young professionals. Um. We believe this should be explored. Uh, the proposal complex is right in the middle of the turnpike between two commercial properties, which. Will impact the pro, proposed demographic, not to mention that downsizing adults typically look for one story living, not two-story dwelling. Um. We believe that families. Uh. It is short sighted to believe that families will not be looking to live in this complex, and that will have an impact on all the listed town services. Um, and a sample of that would be a field zone crossing, where there's many families living in there and, and there are impacts on the town services. Um, we again requested the environmental impact analysis be completed in adherence with the Berlin zoning regulations to address the above concerns of residents of Holly Court, surrounding neighborhoods. Um. We believe the complex and its proposed current location, size, and configuration is. Uh, not in the best interest of the surrounding neighborhoods. And again, I like it that, um, some of this stuff is redundant, if it was somewhat addressed by. But I prepared the, um, back. Before we. Have a little bit of news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, it's a task here on the order of rolling all sorts right next door. Um. Things concern I have a postness of the residential zones next to our property. We're twenty-five feet of commercial property. Uh, requesting that to be twenty-five feet, also away from our property. Uh, also, I talked to Mr. Snow about a fence. Uh, right along the property line, and it's always the same way from the swell. Because it has to be maintained, it drains into my storm drain. And I just need to have that open. Um, if you walk and mark out where it should be.
That's fine, because we do that, we do that after.
Okay.
But yes, I've agreed to do it in proximity of your location.
Okay. Uh, sounds like maybe you can do fence around the whole property.
Can you just, can you just, uh, address it through the commission, so everyone can participate?
Okay, yeah, I'm just, uh, asking Mr. Snow, uh, for a fence around the whole property. So it sounds like you're gonna do.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so you're just asking for the continued eight foot or nine foot fence to go around the whole property?
All the way around the property, right, and just make sure it doesn't produce swell, it's not, it's not producing swell.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's concerned about swell. That swell helps you with drainage on your property?
On, on both properties, actually.
All right, true.
That's all, true.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay.
We will all stand for the Holy Court. I, uh. Coming over here. I, uh, ended up, um. Liking my keys of my car, my state, and all my stuff is already in there.
Oh, no.
So I am, I'm reading off my computer, because then I went. And my printer has been good quality, so.
It's been one of those days.
Yeah. I can get this thing out, will be all set. And, um, so anyways, I'm repeating guests, stop. And I can't talk, um. I have to talk about the amendment.
Oh, that's still happening.
That would, yes.
Okay, talk about the amendment, um, in relation to, uh, sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike.
One thing I do wanna say though, um. We're talking about road units. Were only twenty, only twenty-two feet. Away from the border. They started, I'm, so I'm, I'm on the other side from Irene. And the units there, the first two or three of them. Were thirty feet, and then they slid down. I think somebody must have just. You know, wherever they built them, they were off, but they started at thirty feet. So they're patting themselves on the back, saying, oh, well, we're giving them all this extra space, when originally it was thirty. And now, uh, you know, we think it should be fifty where we are. So anyway, so, um. But it just bothers me because, you know, they're not, they're not stating the whole truth here. Um. We in our Holly Court neighborhood still cannot believe that the planned residential infill development tax amendment. Was passed without our knowledge in May of twenty twenty-one. This has now led to a second zoning application for sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike. To cram nineteen high-density rental units on this one point nine acre property. The underlying commercial zone is BT one. Do not understand why planning and zoning thinks that removing the commercial zone from this property. And allowing high-density rental units. Don't us a solid plan for the town of Berlin. Commercial properties are the lifeblood of the town. Constructing apartments leads to the expansion of town res- resources, which equates to higher taxes for all taxpayers. The commercial opportunity and tax base will be lost forever. The emphasis should be on getting more commercial properties on the turnpike, not less. We are appalled by this project and hope the commission will deny the application. The planned residential infill development tax amendment. Was written specifically for sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike property. The text amendment was brought to PNC. On November fifteen, twenty twenty-one, and effective the next day, just in time. For the original application to be heard of on November eighteen, twenty twenty-one year. Very convenient. This text amendment states in its qualifying standards. In addition to frontage on State Highway five fifteen. The track may have access on other roads if the planning and zoning commission finds traffic conditions warranted. For that it is desired to facilitate public safety. Nothing herein shall be construed to require the access be required from State Highway five fifteen. This qualifying standard puts fear in our hearts. We are convinced that forty-eight Holly. Which owns ninety-five percent of the land at the end of the cul-de-sac, is rightfully taken by eminent domain. The town could cite safety reasons, uh, safety issues for entry and exit in sixteen seventy-six. And take enough land at the end of Holly to construct a large tri- lane into the complex. Why else would this be written in the text about? This potential taking of properties for new entrance and exit because of a concern for safety would never occur. If the BT one zone was enforced. We request the town issue a written statement to all Holly Court property owners that there will never. Be an entrance and exit from this project into our cul-de-sac. This would destroy us, since the traffic steadily would cycle over two hundred trips daily from the project. Moving on, number C. The location, orientation, design, landscape, and general ball, height, and other features. Shall be consistent with the town and neighborhood in which the proposed development is located. And shall take into account where applicable. The surrounding area and, area and extent to which the proposed use and its features and appearance will be in harmony. With the surrounding area, including the effect upon property values in the neighborhood. This revised site plan. Has rental units being built seventeen feet away from its commercial neighbors. And thirty-five feet away from its residential neighbors. We are requesting that the BT one buffers of twenty-five feet for side yards and fit, and the fifty-foot rear buffer. When abutting residential remain in place. This would lessen the impact of high-density housing on our neighborhood. Holly Court is our fifteenth zone with nine owner-occupied ranches and raised ranches, all sixteen to eighteen feet in height. The hi, this high-density rental project will have eight duplexes and three singles on one point nine acres. The two-story height will be between twenty-two and twenty-six feet. The Holly Court street elevation is a hundred and eighteen feet. There's a ten-foot uphill. Change in elevation to a hundred and twenty-eight feet where these units will be built. From our street, we will see these units as being between thirty-two and thirty-six feet in height. Double the height of our houses. Where is the harmony? Between this high-density project and our existing neighborhood? There is not. The current plan of comprehensive development states. All new residential development should support existing neighborhoods. This new project does not support our neighborhood and will be detrimental. To our sense of safety, security, community, and well-being. It will harm our property values. The text amendment states in its design standard. The application shall require twenty percent of the total number of units as affordable housing. Why is the developer asking for forty percent? He stated thirty percent in his original narrative last year. Um, we request that. The developer, we need to stick with the text amendment requirement of twenty percent for affordable housing units. Why is the town and planning and zoning focusing on moderate income? Why isn't? Town and planning and zoning focusing on moderate income, affordable, home ownership? That's what's neither in this town. Not more rental housing. The requirements of section nine C shall not apply to this section eleven DD. But the commission may oppose landscaping, screening, and buffer conditions. That determines necessary through the public health, welfare, and safety. Why shouldn't the standards in section nine C apply? Under landscape buffer requirements, the standard state. Such landscape buffer shall consist of no fewer than two rows of suitable evergreen shrubs and. Trees of at least six feet in height, planted at a dense, density sufficient. To obscure lights and other visually objectionable items, staggered and adjoining rows or other landscaping treatment. Deemed acceptable. We request an eight-foot stockade at, at least an eight-foot on all three sides. We need fencing for our safety, security, and peace of mind. We request two rows. Of six-foot evergreens to be installed on the project side. Of the fence. This would be helpful for a sound area. The Berlin zoning regulations state that it's intense as purpose to protect. The overcrowding of the land and to avoid undue concentration of population. To protect and conserve the character, the environment, and the social and economic well-being of the town. To protect and conserve the value of land and buildings throughout the town. We certainly hope that the zoning commission will take their, their own statements to heart. And deny this application. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else? Not everybody, okay. Um, all right, so, um, is there anyone online who would like to address the commission? I know that we have any viewers that are watching that have questions or comments regarding this application. Now would be the time to do so. Okay, you're in on commission.
Yes, I mean, I've got a lot of her left to consider, uh, but one thing I didn't notice when they were talking about water and runoff and everything like that. When I look at the plan, uh, in front of us. There is nowhere for snow, uh, snow storage for dealing with the road part as far as, you know, with. Any winter.
Uh, so, I can think that I'm on a next line out a little bit of that, because snow storage is gonna be a some of the, where you get shovel and powder around the perimeter and banks be created around the perimeter. Um, initiative driveway is similar to the regular residential driveway where the banks people often keep beside the driveway, so I show you one line. Where these different, all these different, so, 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 it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be just like a typical residential subdivision, uh, with these bottom, so, so. It's also created in a way, so when you stumble, it goes back the roadway.
I'm just saying, I have to wait, develop plans, and everything, I have trouble seeing that.
Yeah, that's a good, a good one. Usually as we're asking. Know about where this, so.
Um, commission. Question, any other questions at this time? I took in a lot, so. I know we took in a lot, but I didn't know if anyone.
I know that over the years, the Holly Court has had flooding. Uh, situations. And, uh. But I hear here on the Alpen. That it ha, it is going to. Lower the flood, flooding sections, uh, towards the Holly Court. Uh, with the plans of the weather. And we've studied this very good. Always a bribe about how much the weather after Mr. Dig study is. Uh. I like the, 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 uh, case, uh, Alpen. Uh, when it was the Forest Motel. Uh, how many units were there?
Eight buildings plus two, two families.
Sorry. No, you have, yeah. There's nothing worse than being moved, no.
Sorry, for the record, Patrick Snow, um, from my knowledge, it was eight individual cottages. They had two, two. Two families in the front and one in the rear, what I understand. I didn't own it at that time.
Yeah.
Going by what the old owner had said.
How, uh. I have to go, probably your rights of the, I don't know, uh, wanted to become, uh, units. So I think it was a total of sixteen or eighteen units. Uh. And. This part of the, 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 the regulations that we adopted. Uh. Really was to not put more units in, uh. Development area than was in there originally. So eighteen, nineteen units are still, uh. You know, within range of the units that were there before. Uh, and rental hotel motel, motel. Uh. And rental. Units. Single family units, uh. Which the Forest Motel was mostly efficiency units. Uh, they did have a little stove and stuff in them. Uh. So I, I really don't see, first, I don't see the extra impact to the neighborhood. Uh, and the water situation has been present by the Alpen. Uh. And rental homes. Is a, many commercial would use, I think, the Russell Motel. Uh. I know, I experienced by my mother-in-law owning one of these hotels on the, on the turnpike. Uh. And the clientele. For the. The hotels, uh. Was not. Uh, clientele that we want. And I don't know, I'll say that, well, you know. Kind of like that. Uh. New units like this, I think will attract better clientele. Uh. So that's the, the pros that I see. On this development, and also only having one entrance exit. Uh, instead of three. Uh. And, uh, the Holly Court was built, I think, fifties.
Seventy.
Ninety-one. Uh, and I know they did have the water problems, because, uh, I was, the, um, property was, was a fire department. Open a water problem, comes out there. Uh. So I understand that, uh, concern. Uh. With the, with the new layout. with the, with the new layout of water drainage. I think it's a advancement. The other thing is I understand the fencing that's wanted. I assume that, that, uh, uh, it would be great to have fencing all around. I don't think we can have more than six feet right now. So back there at six feet.
Only, only in the residential zones. So that's not considered. So I'll check the fact wording to make sure it's not residential property, but I believe it's.
Okay, well, I know the residential zone's six feet, only, uh, three people is brought. Uh, so I don't know if it could do eight feet as, uh, it's allowed out here, I'm sure that it would, it would be appropriate. I, uh, I do not understand why I went to only do, uh, do a player and they don't have one. I think there's a little bit more pride if they don't have any units than there is a duplex. Uh, and if they don't have any units, do a little bit like that. So I, I personally like the first application better than this one. Uh, and I, so basically eighteen units is the number. Nineteen is, uh, I'll be doomed, but I always thought eighteen was the number for this. And this is not spot zoning, I can tell you that, not spot zoning, it's not doing spot zoning. Uh, it was not just for the, the application. One thing we did to, they do a study of every complex or hotel on a turnpike that couldn't do this. And, uh, made sure that no one, one place would go get impacted and not other places. And within those years, on the cleanup, the old hotel, turnpike. Uh, and this then we had was a good, of the turnpike hotel and, uh, I've been there, and we should not talk about. Uh, but, uh, I think it is improved, uh, on that piece of property from what it was.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. For adding other questions at this time? Um, I, I have some questions, but I, I have a different memory than you two. Um, I do know, and I, I saw that in the plan itself, we had a sampling of what was originally on site. And I counted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. And there were, excuse me, and there were two other existing buildings to the front. If I remember correctly, one of them was an office. Now, whether the office had a residence in, I don't know, but it had an office in the other building. I, I'd never have a memory, all my life was of it being a restaurant or any kind of, you know, old snuggies, but that was a little by the patch. Which now be an store or whatever. Uh, anyway, um, so, I mean, but my, and I'm sorry, uh, for my question, when I look at what was and what is being proposed, I guess my perception is a little different than you two, because I look and I say, well, no, no, I, and that's not, I'm not degrading your remarks, I don't hate you. But my reaction is, what justifies nineteen? I, I, and, and you have one point nine acres, so you, we're looking at basically two acres of land. And my problem is, is that I can't justify nineteen units on that property. Um, I looked at your plan that you have up here on the board, and I'm terribly at a two going sometimes. So the first thing I did was I pulled out two duplexes in the center because I thought to myself, if you're gonna form a community, you gotta give me something. And this is just my initial reactions to this, okay, I'm not gonna do, do, because I know the hour's late. Well, I look at it and I think to myself, we have no, we have a quality of life to offer these people that come and live in this community. And when I look at a development like this, whether it's on forty acres of property, a hundred and sixty acres of property, or a little point nine acres, my first reaction is, where is the quality of life for these people? Because to me, it has to be contained within the neighborhood and not to be fought, you know, sought out anywhere else. I mean, yeah, you can go to the movie theater, yeah, you can go to the shopping mall, yeah, you can hit the TJ Maxx. But when it comes to the neighborhood, it has to be something, it has to be able to allow for, if there are kids or single mom with kids or a new couple starting out, you have to give them that sort of area that belongs to them. And it's not contingent or dependent on any other surrounding neighborhood. Um, or, or park or whatever, it should be something that's allowed. So when I look at the cul-de-sac, I look at the center of duplexes, and the first thing I think of, what a nice little community center that would be. You could do it almost like a boulevard, you could have it, uh, you could, uh, you don't even have to have picnic tables out there, but you could just have like a seating area where maybe there was a couple benches there or whatever, flowers around or maybe even just one of a solar fountain that lights in the summer. But you could develop something that would give these people a chance that if they wanted to go out and visit with their neighbor, it would be a place for them to, to meet. Then I look at the surrounding homes. And I, I'm certainly not an engineer, but the first thing I think of is that, you know, you could, I look at unit number sixteen, which is all the way down at the end, I mean, things kind of look like they're crammed in, so if you have this greenery, now you can just do this boulevard that goes around. Why not cut back some of these duplexes and just arrange for a nice single-family home? You know, I mean, if you, if you need the duplex, I, I, I guess, you know, maybe have them scattered throughout. But you have more duplexes here than you have single family. And these are all just initial thoughts, but they're mine, you know, I'm, I'm rustling with it. I think what you're trying to do is can ultimately be a good thing, Mr. Snow. But I think that we really gotta kind of make it a proud little project. And that's something where it's just kind of, just shoved in there.
And, and that's what we're attempting to do, and just to speak from experience. Uh, other things I've done, the nice part about duplexes and single-family houses, there's no law. People don't, if you go to some of these large buildings, you're walking down a hallway, you're sharing a hallway with forty or thirty people. Some people say that's great for community, other people say, I don't really wanna see my neighbor that's running, running down that hall. So that's part of the, the whole balance, I'm not saying that, that one's right or wrong, but that's part of it, the other part with the duplex and the single family is, there's no one above and one below. So if there is a neighbor who's louder than somebody else, it's less likely they're gonna be heard here. Now, anyone could buy a huge stereo and, and the whole neighborhood could hear that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that there's no walking and talking in, uh, you know, units that we build, as much installation as you do. If someone's jumping upstairs, unfortunately, the neighbor below them hears it. So that's part of the community portion, that you try to make that it's only and small and if people are walking in the neighborhood, they will go out and talk and, and meet, is there a place to congregate, no, I, I, you're not, I'm really interested.
Yeah, and but, but just, I mean, I understand the up and down or whatever, but versus the side-by-side, I, you know, I get that. But I just, I'm trying to figure out how you could probably realign the homes, maybe forego some of the duplexes and go down to the single family. And then perhaps make it more, and, and pull it in a little bit now that the clump, you know, now that you've done, but the duplexes are gone from the inner circle, pull the whole development in and eliminate a couple, either duplexes or, I don't wanna say the single family, I kinda like that, but eliminate some of the duplexes or make them one single family. But I mean, you may wanna take that, but anyways, that's, that's, I know the hour's late, I don't wanna keep everyone here, but that's my initial thought. Any other commissioners at this time?
I see Mr. Miller logged in, just wanna give him an opportunity to speak.
Oh, okay, I didn't catch him, thank you.
And just, uh, maybe to bring him up to speed, from what I heard, his question was on the affordability, or the, since we had recommended six, why don't we just stay with the twenty percent as four, he could probably answer that question.
Okay. All right, welcome, Mr. Miller. Glad just to join you.
Am I being heard right now?
Yes, you are, thank you.
Oh, great, well, happy to see, uh, my old friends here. Uh, I was actually at a
We can all agree with you.
I think he stopped.
I know, I'm still here, I'm just, I'm just checking something. Uh, I, with that, I, um, basically, the, the, the method of calculating this was the same as the report that I, uh, it was, it's similar to the report that I submitted at the last round of the application. It was only updated to change some of the numbers um, because the state, um, and HUD, they reevaluate income levels annually. And of course, that was, uh, that's the basis for the pricing as well as the, uh, cost of utilities. And again, this is all done by, um, the State Department of Housing so that all those numbers are what they use and what's used in the calculation. I guess the question was asked, why not four? Well, the applicant proposed six units, uh, because that was what, uh, your regulations, which, uh, tail onto the eight thirty G regulations require. I, I haven't looked at your regulations, whether it authorizes you to, um, only ask for four, it probably does. And I suspect the applicant would be willing to lower the num- the number of affordable units if you desired. But it was just, it, it's really what the application calls for. Again, it's in line with the eight thirty G, uh, requirements. So for twenty units or nineteen units, you need six affordable, three at the eighty percent and three at sixty percent. I'm not sure that was the question I was getting texts as to the question. So if, if, if that isn't the full question, I'd be happy to answer more.
I think, Brian, one of the questions, if I could just say, was that, uh, some of the audience members had asked about affordable housing, just so they're clear, eighty percent of AMI, what would a person be making in order to qualify for that and the sixty? Because I think they're, I'm not sure, I'm just surmising that they may be in the impression that affordable means a lot less than what we're actually proposing.
Well, I, I will answer that question if I have, uh, if you give me a, a moment right now. Let's see, for the sixty percent level, the, um, this is based on the, uh, Hartford, uh, New Haven, uh, um, the Hartford, East Hartford, West Hartford metro area. And, uh, this is at, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I got the, I got the report from last year, but it's, this is approximately it. It's, uh, it hasn't changed all that much. The, uh, income for the sixty percent would be for, um, a family of three would be, uh, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and four. And that's what would be expected to live, that's how the state calculates um, for two-bedroom, uh, units that they would, uh, expect three people to live there. And at the eighty percent, it, it's seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars annually.
And thank you, Brian. Now, Brian, can I ask you another question, uh, just because you, um, you're talking about the affordability element? Does that take into account inflation at all?
Yeah, well, it's tied to, um, yes, it does. Because it's tied to the income levels um, of the, the, the median income levels in the various, uh, regions of the state. So presumably, inflation also pushes up income levels. But it doesn't really, the, it, the only accounting it does for, uh, directly for inflation is that it, it, it raises the price, it calculates a ra- a, an increased utility price, which actually would lower the rent that the, um, landlord could receive because they, there, the way it's calculated is that there'll be, that somebody could afford X number of dollars, uh, monthly housing costs. If the, uh, utility rates go up, then that's, has to be subtracted from the rent. The rent is really what's left over after the taking away the utility costs. So in a way, it, it, the, for, as far as the tenant, it might uh, reflect inflation, but it doesn't really, in many cases, the landlord isn't able to increase the rents of the affordable units just because inflation is doing so and the market's going up.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Brian.
My pleasure.
Any other questions from the commission at this time?
I don't think it's really the question, just more of a comment, and it's kind of what we've been talking about as well, so. I, I think my biggest concern is the ten units going to nineteen units. Um, I understand that, you know, I'm sure you, you take a look at the feasibility and the profitability that, you know, there is a magic number in there to make sure that the, um, project is viable and profitable as well. I'm just wondering if there's somewhere in there more of a happy medium where maybe we can still meet um, some of the setback requirements, um, by maybe reducing some of the numbers. But that's, right now, that's, that's kind of my, my concern is the, is the number of, of the units on that side of the property.
I think. Um, I know, I know we've spent a lot of testimony. Um, and I thank everyone for their patience. Um, I think I, for one, have to really go back to my plans and my notes and everything that I've taken in uh, before I can even start to finish delivering this project. I, I think we really just have to think about everything that's been poured out um, and to take it into consideration. Because we're very serious about the job and we try to be fair to everyone. And the commission is all citizens in the town. And so we respect everyone for coming out, sharing their thoughts. And, um, I think, um, we will, and I thank Mr. Snow and, and, um, his willingness to talk and work with us. And I'm looking forward to doing some more of that, but, um,
Just before you close, or we'll continue.
Yeah.
The things I have agreed to, and, and part of it is I do agree to the fence going along the left hand and the back. And there's a reason I was doing it on the right, but sarcastically, just that it can't be done on that right-hand side of the property. Um, you can address that portion, so.
Oh, okay.
Back, I, I did, I do agree with the neighbors, I will do a fence along where the auto body shop is and along the Holly Court portions, so that's a clear statement on the record.
Okay, sorry.
As far as, um, gas parking, we're gonna look at that plan and we'll have some ideas about maybe kind of create a couple pumpouts just to create some additional gas parking, which we can address. Certainly, I can't say how many, uh, that, but.
Well, no, I mean, this is all, this is all just initial feedback that you're getting at this point.
Right, and this is, I'm just, I'm just, this is.
Yeah, I can kind of get you going in right now. Absolutely.
And then one other thing that, that's been, as far as town services, and I can only go by my experience. I have another twenty unit complex in Berlin, and we have one child there. I've owned it for the last three years, even most we've had is two. So as far as a net cost from a school system to the town, I, I can't say this can be different, but it's the same setup and that's typically what I've done, one to two, it's the number of children that are there. Typically, if you have small children, they end up moving out into a home, buying a home, or going somewhere else, not being apartment. Um, yeah, I can't say that's true, but it's probably experience over the last three years and probably over the last ten or fifteen, but. As far as the town services go, early the taxes on the, on the motel around sixteen thousand dollars per year. Um, estimated these taxes are gonna be approximately seventy thousand per year. Plus the people who own cars, if there's one or two cars, it'll be, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars to the property. Should be approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Again, don't quote me at every number, but that's pretty much where I am with that.
Oh, no problem.
That's, that's just, I wanted to bring that up, it's, I believe it's not gonna be a net, um, financial impact to the town of that best.
Exactly. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue, only because there are a lot of additional testimony and participation. I'm giving that motion. All right, so, okay, thank you. So we got a motion, you know, by Ms. George and second by Ms. DeRogan. Uh, I mean, for the discussion, so all look to the favor.
Right.
Okay, and this would be continued. And this will be continued to. October, this will be the October sixth.
Next meeting is October sixth.
October sixth, okay, great. Alright, terrific. Yeah, no, we're not gonna do the, okay, terrific. So this will be continued October sixth. Alright, thank you all for coming out today.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good night.
And when I got the phones. Yeah, I'm getting your hands. So I can only go along to the old business. Okay, so I'll, this is with the twelve amendment to the zoning regulations. Oh, like, I hope it's having one to do.
I'm sorry for long meetings. I really should have a different wire up here. I'm sorry. I'll try to remember next time.
Alright, so. There you go.
Chris, want any?
I'm quick, thanks. I'd like to say yes, I'm gonna be good.
We're waiting for permission. So for those of you who are zoomed in like Mr. Biella. Just hang in there. Here comes Mr. Sigma.
Well. What'd you say?
I, I said, we're waiting for Mr. Sigma.
Right here.
So we're going off to the old business. So hang in there, Steve. We'll just be a few seconds. Okay, proposed amendments on in regulations, Joseph F. Cassiel. Section six H three, special permit using. Uses regarding indoor sports complex uses in the BT two zone. Okay, we've heard the testimony, we've seen. We've seen what the offering is and how it affects the town and which areas are under consideration with the BT. So what's the flavor of the commission of this?
The BT zones that we have. You know, Christian Lane there. I forget the name of the place, but Christian Lane on the curve. Cheerleading thing in that.
Oh, you're, oh, you're talking about, okay, you're talking about Christian Lane, Demi Road.
Christian Lane, Demi Road, there's a cheerleading thing up there. We have the golf place on Demi Road. Virtual golf place with Demi Road. And they've worked out pretty good there. No hassle with the competition or the other industrial or anything else. I, I think it's a good fit into the use of the buildings that have not been used for a long time. Pickle building has been used for a long time.
Yeah, I was just disappointed that you didn't suggest pickleball. That's really good.
I, I, I said that to him.
Yeah, well, the seniors, we like to do the pickleball.
Pickleball, pickleball is.
That would fall under, I would think that would fall under the racket ball. Okay, we'll go with the elegance after. So am I hearing, am I hearing any kind of motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Oh, there you go, Steve. You got it in there. He was hanging on that. He was hanging on that. So we have a motion approved by Mr. Sigma. And we have a second by Commissioner Biella, excuse me, Commissioner, not Commissioner Biella. Do we have any further discussion? And all those in favor? Also, so moving on to special permit site plan applications of Kevin Costin Camera LLC for the enterprise truck rental location. And relieved site plan improvements at, well, the rest of that stuff. I'm not going to read all the blocks and the maps and everything. I think that Fran could probably get that. So how do we feel about this?
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comment and staff review of lighting and staff review of. The facade when it comes to fencing and natural screen.
Okay, so she's gonna take a look at both of the fencings. So estate fencing with plantings in front or the white with the plantings in front?
To make sure that whatever they do is easy to appear in the plaza.
Okay, second, I had second. Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. DeRogan. We have a second by Commissioner DeRogan. And we have further discussion? All those in favor? Also move. Thank you. So now we have a special site plan for the little house, but we're going to be continuing this. Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Sigma. Second by Commissioner Dorsey. For the discussion, all those in favor? So moved. Alright, on to the plan, planner comments. We have three things. We have forms, economic development matters and matters of interest. Which would you like to take first and which do you want to combine?
Okay, so the forms weren't printed. So we'll deal with forms in any day, but what we really have, I'll give you a short synopsis. We worked on, before Caitlin left, we worked on creating a special event form for those administrative review. We went through some other towns and how they went to the administrative review by going to the police department and going to engineering or fire to make sure that. Everyone became aware of it. And then there'll be a staff review, but I was gonna have you guys sort of give me direction to create that. And the other main one we were gonna do was also responsive to the plan size and quantities that we. Request upon our site plan applications. So that you work really hard to get less of the eleven by seventeen forms based on sets of plans. So you guys can actually read it, getting full size plans, and so we're looking to update the directions on those forms to. Change it back to full size and less staff specifically allows smaller size. So, you know, we've had a couple of applications where smaller size makes sense, the whole.
They might, it makes small. What makes more sense is to have laptops. For all of us to be able to zoom in on your shared screen. Yeah, right. I, I'm gonna tell you from experience in town hall, that's a high trading. Well, I, I already. It's, I, I have thought several times of bringing my own computer and. Just to have the ability to do that because the plans themselves sometimes are almost impossible to read. And where we're situated, we can't.
These screens are very disgraced. Yeah, I try to zoom in as much as I can, but of course they start shooting about a different section immediately. And then I'm afraid you're looking, trying to focus on something and I'm moving the screen on you. Yeah, I need to do it yourself. It would be to your hand.
And I'm sure every, I'm sure the town council could use them, you know, they could be shared.
Alright, thank you very much.
Good night. Do note, we've gone leaps and bounds with staff, with their placing staff desktops for anybody who moves around their host meetings. They've been replacing ours with BlackOps. So now the, the rent is declining, or rather, our zoning planner, who from having a desktop. Took over the zoning desktop and he now has a laptop because it was due for replacement. So as they're getting budgeted in for replacement, so I don't know what town manager and town councils. IT's plans are, but.
I think that all of this, something that would provide a savings of time for you and your staff. Yeah. From having to collate all of, you know, and split out all these packages for all of us. If you have an electronic copy of everything. May I suggest that you, that's actually.
Makes too much sense.
Yeah, it does. But, you know, and there are other city councils and there's other city government planning zoning down south. And they all have a laptop and I've seen, I've watched their meetings. Particularly one meeting in Florida, I watched the planning and zoning meeting to see how they handled things. And they all came in, they all had their laptops, they all went there and they were all looking around and they writing remarks to themselves and. There was no, there was no big screen TV, no zooming, no boards, no nothing. I mean, people had it. So I might, but you know what, just as an item, let, let's figure out what it will cost to do that. And let's put it in the budget.
I like.
And the worst they're gonna do is say, no, but I can always go before then.
I think they do find cost savings too, to get us fine, et cetera.
Absolutely. Okay. What I do, so.
Thank you, thank you for the, thank you for the feedback, that's, and I know when they try to look you for something in the budget or asking for something. The volunteers, it carries a little more weight.
So let's do our job.
Thank you, Ben. Um. Chris left, so economic development matters. And the matters of interest in upcoming meetings, we're just a reminder, and you already talked about it, the, on the twenty second meeting session followed by the P O C D. We're still working on the joint meeting and timing of that. And that the October sixth meeting has come a little heavy. And just want everyone prepared.
Bring coffee and. And just.
I was like saying about that, this commission does a lot of. Working on these plans and suggestions on these plans. And when I see something being built, it's not built like the plan says, I have a problem.
You bring it to our attention.
The decision is that. Place has a focus. We asked for the copper roofs towards the lower lane on two, the two double windows on that building, there's no copper roofs and double window. Overall.
This is supposed to be that tall? I don't remember it being that tall.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta watch the.
So that, that is not in the plan, so I guess we're still. In the plan, we'll do, do specify that.
I'll review that.
And the other thing, Brolin Stone and Gravel, I know you know that situation down there.
Stone Gravel, which is, I know, I know.
Colosso, I think it's.
Well, not in the ground, rather.
Oh, the Christian Lane, yeah, the, the Christian Lane problem had, don't care.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Uh, next to the dark.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That is about three times the size that we improved. It's a farm of a British property upon a hill. And it is wider than probably double sized than a lot that we improved. And the violations there are horrendous. So I, it's, when, when stuffs get built and not completed. You know, and I got in trouble when I set the Manafort. They never put the hydrant in for the pond or Manafort when they came in for the scale, like twenty years ago. But it's, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, they have fires in there every couple of months and there's no fire item there. You know, but it wasn't the plan. Twenty years ago, I don't care if it was, it was proved twenty years ago, it should be in there this, this year. So. I don't know who's not picking this stuff up, the building department. I would assume that they're the ones who go, who wants to go out with the plan and say. Built this way. And our notes of what we, I changed in the plan. But I see it all the time. And the paint store next to CBS, we can. So.
So it's important, don't, don't wait for a meeting. Bring it up, bring it up, you know, as soon as you see something, call in. Leave a message with Fran.
Okay, I don't, I will do that.
Yeah, but, but, but that's really important.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you know, you put conditions for a reason. And, and people should not be not building things in accordance with plans. You know, sometimes there are mistakes made. I, I had a situation in other town where a contractor was given the wrong set of plans. Was given a set of plans that was two plans earlier. And it was a disaster because they had walls in the wrong spot and it was just. So, you know, it ended up costing the property a lot of money. But, you know, they should have.
No, yeah, I, I, the building inspector has got it all there in spite. And what I've always seen over the years is the, you know, on the strike, see if it's. At the wireman, right spot, fire stops and stuff like that, they never expect. Is this the building that we're supposed to be building?
So, so we actually do that, the zoning, the planning, so you're not gonna suppose out when they're, when they're asking specific occupancy and or the return of the bond. Or something like the fire hydrant, I suspect it was. Possibly not written in the original bond or something where that wouldn't have. I, I don't know. The Brolin, the end of the Brolin Stone and Gravel, I had no idea. It was a building where I came and I didn't know.
And, and our, our piece of property is told so far. So depending on where it's at, we.
Steve, I see you leaning in. Did you want to add something?
No, I'm just trying to listen to Tim. Kind of hard to hear on here.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
What, what building are you talking about?
I was, I was talking about the two, two buildings, one in the, the, ex of focus. On Lower Lane and Farmington Avenue. If you remember the copper awnings, you know, put over the windows. Facing Lower Lane and Farmington Avenue.
Crossed stop, Michelle.
Crossed stops, yeah. There's only one awning or door covered, that's the one towards, towards focus. So. And the other thing was called a belt property of Brolin Stone and Gravel. Which is way out of our, our.
Got you.
I will give you an update on, on that scene, though. Development site in East Berlin, the Cookmore property family that's going in next to Mr. Snow's project. The, they were stopped from working, taking away the dumpster, et cetera. Remediation issues, so they're, so they're, they're stopped right now. I, I think, I don't know if they did in the last couple of days, have been able to take it, but it's a little messier than it was. Because they were stopped during the.
The vote disappeared now.
So the second vote is, I, I believe the second vote was there the last time I was there. The first vote was not, the second vote was, was still there. So anyway, it is being worked on. I just wanted to show you that.
The bigger vote left were two days.
Alright.
The building department and zoning department are both for it, yeah.
Just, yeah.
I don't want to, just the opposing note. I mean, you typically, where I come to meetings on every week. You don't typically have enforcement on agenda. If there are properties that you want to discuss and have a conversation where everybody can, wants to get in and so forth. You'll learn more in that. Because, you know, many commissions do have that on their agenda. It's okay to discuss because obviously. She was your agent, you know, the. It's okay to discuss, because obviously, she is your agent, you know, and, and sometimes there needs to be discussion about what's going on. I, I do like to feed, and I do advise always the property addressed down, so that way it's on your agenda. And, you know, really, it gives notice that, you know, it's gonna be discussed. And I think it's okay also to invite the property owner in. You know, you don't have to have that circumstance of, you know, she's issuing a cease and desist order or just a notice of violation, you know, you're gonna show your goal or something. You know, it's okay, and that, and that really is not enough of that. Because I think sometimes that conversation will lead to a much quicker remedy. If they're advised, you know, the planning and administration would like to have a conversation with you about what's going on, about compliance.
Yeah.
It's okay to do it in an informal way. That's all right. What, what could they say? No, I'm not gonna call. That's all. That's what happens.
I gotta, I gotta say, I should take a picture of that, a copy of that, that road. They re-did that building and, 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 stone and red siding.
Oh, that beautiful building.
Oh, Christian, it's almost across. Monument sign they put out there is gorgeous.
Yeah.
I said, that should be.
Nice job.
Really?
And the last note.
That should be it.
Let's make a note to the mayor. Yeah, and the last note, I'd like to add there too, I won't reach out to the mayor, but just let him know that I'm done banging my head and my elbows against this, like, opening up flames, which, which.
I just, you know, helped on that property on Deming Road. He did have an enforcement issue with the work he's done there, however, they presented to the board that they would not be modifying their limit of disturbance from what was there, and they cleared out way a bit more and added gravel, they did pull it back out, and but now the parking's very well. Last conversation I had with him a couple of weeks ago, they were using it for parking, even though they didn't have to gravel there anymore. So he has, he has upgraded his building quite a bit. We did have to work on the monument sign to have the proposal come into within the regulations and on that parking. So, yeah, and sometimes it takes hard work to get something that good. But they did propose nice upgrade, overall, the nice upgrades for the building itself, some of the site conditions we've been working on.
Alright. I, I think, I think because the hour's getting more and more, it's getting later, we're now at 10:37. So can I have a motion to adjutant, please?
I will make a motion to adjutant.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kohler. Anyone else further discussion, all those in favor? Hi. Alright, thank you, Steve, for joining us, and hope to see you October 6th.
I'll be there personally.
Steve's getting faster on that one.
Wait, no, wait, September 22nd. Oh, that's exactly, I guess, POCD, I guess I'm not going away that day either. Okay, alright, but now everyone.